We should wait for Seth to hop back on.
I started recording.
That's okay, we can start.
We can fill the dead air with, there he is.
There he is. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hopkinton School Boards meeting for days today. Today's Thursday, February 18th, 2021, and we have a full board with us this evening with Andrea Folsom, Rob Nato, Norm Gupel, Seth A-frame, and Jim O'Brien, and we're joined with, by Michelle Clark and Steve Chamberlain. So thanks, everyone. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Steve, do you have a fixture for us this evening?
I do. Can you see the flag?
You sure can.
So just a little update, we have some windows going in. I think that's called glazing in construction business, something like that. But we've got windows, you can see, this is the connection between the old and the new and the new office space. So we're excited, we're getting it.
Windows are a good addition. Steve, do you want to kick us off? Do you want to do the pledge?
Sure, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Steve. So we are here once again at the end of February in remote, meeting remotely. And we're able to do this because of the governor's emergency declaration due to the COVID pandemic and emergency orders. The one that's applicable to us is an emergency order that allows for public boards and bodies such as the Hopkinton School Board to be able to operate and do business fully remote. So there is no physical location for our meeting this evening. We are conducting our business utilizing Zoom as an online platform. So any member of the public can access this meeting and listen to the conversation in real time, either on Zoom as well as through a phone number that is provided in the posting. We do have two opportunities during this meeting for public comments, and one will be coming up here shortly at the, at the beginning of the meeting and another one at the end of the meeting. And I'll give instructions for how members of the public can provide public comment. All other provisions of RSA 91A will be followed and are followed by the board. So, you know, as an example, meeting minutes of this meeting are available following the meeting per the statute. And then because we are in fully remote, all votes of the board will be conducted in a roll call fashion. So it takes a little bit longer, but all of our votes will be roll call votes this evening. If anybody has any trouble accessing the meeting or gets cut off from the meeting, they can con, there's, there's a number on the website to contact. And we will postpone the meeting until we resolve our technical issues, but thankfully that hasn't been an issue over the past year. So with all that said, we will move on. Actually, I should say, for the agenda, if there's no objections from the board, I would propose that after we approve the minutes and have public comments, that we move to the S, to the debrief on the SB2 public hearing and then invite James Newsom, our district moderator, to join us and just talk about the scheduling for the district meeting. So so rearrange the schedule a little bit, but do that off the top. Is there any objection to that? All right, perfect. And I also want to welcome Juliette Shahadeh, our student representative to the board. Thanks for joining us, Juliette. All right, so Steve, other than the change that we just identified, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
The agenda is fine. I just want to bring to the board's attention a revised board schedule that I'll be reviewing when we get to that agenda item. But we've made some updates since the original packet was distributed, but the agenda is fine.
Perfect. Any correspondence?
There are some correspondence and the correspondence.
Perfect. So this brings us to our approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve that were in our packet. And so I would ask if there is a motion from the board to recommend the approval of the minutes of our regular school board meeting held on February 4th, 2021.
So moved.
All right, the motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion, amendments, or changes to the minutes? All right, seeing none. Andrea?
Andrew Folsom is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So those minutes are approved. And I would ask if there is a motion to recommend the Hopkinton School Board approve the minutes of the non-public portion of the regular school board meeting held on February 4th, 2021.
So moved.
Any discussion on those? All right, seeing none. Andrea?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
And Seth?
Seth A-frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so those minutes are approved. So this brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. And as promised, for those who are attending and wish to provide public comments, if you just move your cursor down towards the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand feature, and that will raise your hand and let us know that you have a comment for, to give. So I would just ask in your public comments, just to state your name and address, if you would, and then try to keep your public comments to around three minutes. That would be great. So with that, the first hand that went up is Darlene Dildersleeve. Good evening, Darlene.
Hi, good evening. Firstly, I want to thank all of you for your service during this time. I really appreciate it. Today I saw that the governor gave an emergency order mandating that schools do at least two days a week of in-person learning. I also have read in somebody's page or one of the forums that there is a member, like a memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union or the teachers, really advocating for them to be remote for as long as possible. I'm not sure of the wording. I haven't seen the memorandum of understanding for myself. But, you know, with the governor's emergency order, I would think that that would override any memorandum of understanding within the school district. I'm not sure, but, you know, I'd like to personally advocate for full in-person learning without two days a week of hybrid and all of that, perhaps giving parents with kids with certain medical conditions exemptions that, you know, so that they could do remote instruction. Because what's happening is, in my case, I've done a lot of mental health advocacy in the state. And, and what's happening is parents know my name and they're contacting me even, even before they were contacting me. And I asked the district to hire a social worker full-time. Even before the pandemic, I asked the district three times to at least seek grants for a social worker. But right now, there's 48 kids in the emergency rooms being boarded for the mental health crisis. This is for suicidality, meaning that what we're seeing is eighth graders, seventh graders killing themselves. And it's horrific, and it needs to stop. And most of it is being fueled because they don't have in-person schooling. They don't have the routine. They don't have the structure. They don't have the teachers that mean so much to them providing the support. And as an example, my child has several disabilities. She's fighting a bone tumor right now. I have to drive her to Boston all the time for treatment. In fact, yesterday she spent all day in surgery on her thigh bone to get a biopsy to see if it's cancer or not. And my daughter is blessed to go to a school for kids with any kind of disability. They're fully in person, including kids that are medically vulnerable, that are fully in person. And my daughter was so despondent, hopeless, and frankly, she was begging me to withdraw her. And I know Norm in the past has asked a very intelligent question to the superintendent, why are kids being homeschooled? And we couldn't really get a good answer of why the kids are being homeschooled. But I can tell you right now, kids are begging to leave school. They're hopeless. They have learned to hate school, no matter how awesome the teachers in Hopkinton are. They have really suffered a lot of depression. Even in our small town, there are kids experiencing suicidal thoughts and hopelessness. My daughter, when her school went back to in-person, which was quite a while ago, she had lightened her eyes again. She had a sparkle. Her personality came back. And even with her bone tumor, her, all her various medical issues, you know, she would use her walker, wheelchair and hobble, hobble out to her transport and skip off to school. So what I'm asking the board to consider is the serious mental health epidemic that we're experiencing and fight against the union. The union is a mafia. And I, you know, I actually worked with, I actually worked and led the Concord School District to get rid of their superintendent. And the mafia, the mafia union was there at every school board meeting. And do you know what they said to me? They said, you're not allowed to mention any staff members' names, even the sexual abuser who was in Concord. So the union is not looking out for these minor children. The union is looking out for their pocketbook and the money that they're getting.
I think, I think, I'm sorry, that, I'm gonna.
I know, I'm trying to get Darlene.
Because I wouldn't interrupt you when you're talking. Now.
But I don't think it's appropriate, Darlene, to be calling anyone that name.
To be interrupted.
I respect that.
I am hoping to speak for the mental health and for the lives, literally the lives of students in our district. I am getting contacted from parents asking me, how do I pull out my kid to homeschool? These are Hopkinton families that are contacting me. How do I get my kid transferred to Bishop Brady? How do I get out of this district? And we're paying thousands of dollars a year in taxes. We want our kids to be schooled in person in Hopkinton. And I'll tell you right now, I am not taking my daughter out of her private school to go to Hopkinton High School when the union is dictating and bossing around the school board.
Thank you, Darlene, thank you.
Please be strong. Please be strong and fight against this mafia union and, and only work for the benefit of our minor kids who are suffering so terribly.
Thank you, Darlene. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. I thank you for your service, but I mean, I just want.
Good night. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
So I do want to comment. I didn't want to cut Darlene off. Our unions are not mafias. I think that's derogatory. And my hope is that that language isn't used to describe our teachers and our teachers' association. It's, it's, it's not, it's just not even over the top. It's, it's, it's an insult. And so I would just ask people to not be insulting. Our unions are not mafia. And I have more to say about this, but I don't want to cut off public comment, but if we're going to be receiving, if, if, if the, the point of public comment is not to insult others, is to provide a comment on your opinion that can move us forward. It's, it's not to insult our teachers. It's not to insult our administration. It's not to insult our staff, and it's not to insult the board. So I'd appreciate if we could steer away from such comments. Thanks.
And I apologize for interrupting you, Darlene. I just, I have, you know, I, I appreciate what you're, what you have to say, but I do agree with Jim. Let's try and keep this respectful. So I do want to extend an apology for interrupting her.
Next hand is Amanda Gilman.
Hello, everyone. Good night, or good evening, I guess. First, thank you as always for your tireless efforts. I can't imagine how exhausting this is for everyone, and I very much appreciate all your energy here. I have a couple of questions. I'm interested in the details of the, the teacher's contract that we'll be discussing or that will be up, the negotiated one. Where can I find a copy? I think of the CBA or some details for the public?
So the existing CBA is on the website, the one that we're governed by. And then there's an FAQ document for the new teacher's contract that's also available on the website. And so if you look at, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the existing CBA, the one that's on the website, there, there was no negotiated changes to that. So the language in that CBA generally will hold. I don't think there, actually, this is where Steve can kick me under the table. I don't think there's any changes to the language or some additions to the language that are part of the FAQ document, if I'm correct. But Steve, maybe you want to.
Right, there are some slight changes to some language regarding a day from curriculum afternoons and a little bit. But all that's articulated, all the changes in language and the monetary issues are in the FAQ document that is on the website.
And so I have not come across this. Is it under school board? Just, I apologize for making you dig in the weeds here.
No, I mean, I'll make, I'll make sure it's right up in front and center tomorrow morning, and I can send you a copy. I think it's under the budget committee, but I'll make sure it's on.
Budget committee, okay. I've been digging, and I haven't been able to find anything, so.
I'll make sure it's front and center tomorrow. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Second, I know that you all have received some correspondence this week from many concerned community members about possibility, inquiring about possibility of 100% return to in-person this year, which will require three-foot spacing and masks. And the concern, I believe, for this is growing in the community. And I'm wondering if the administration or the board has considered the feasibility of three-foot spacing? Is this something that has been discussed? Is it achievable?
So I would say, yes, the board has discussed it and was discussed during, I'm going to get the date wrong. I'm going to say over the summer, as we were discussing back to school, and that was stuff that the board has discussed. And as you know, Amanda, we are, have a MOA, and I should have mentioned that Darlene had asked. That is on our website. So that, all the MOAs and agreements should be easily found on the website. If they're not, we can.
It is. I've read it thoroughly. It's there.
So we have an MOA that the board has unanimously agreed to along with the two associations. And so that's currently our governing philosophy and our governing practice as, as we are in the pandemic.
So the MOA mandates no, no less than six-foot spacing. So that's what you're saying? Because we're governed by that, you're not considering anything less than six-foot spacing for the duration of the year?
So the agreement that we have that we're currently operating under is that agreements can be renegotiated and they can be discussed with the association.
Right. And so I've asked a couple of times about the possibility of discussing this in the future. And my concern is that time is going to pass, and our teachers are going to get vaccinated, and this will not be renegotiated in a timely fashion and will end up being reactionary instead of proactive. So I would like to urge the board to, or the administration specifically, to actually think about is three feet feasible? Can, can we legitimately do three feet? Because that is the, the crux. That is, all this might be moot if we can't fit our kids at three feet with masks. And so I'm wondering how I can go about finding out if that is, if an answer to that question.
Um, I'll ask Steve if, if he has an answer to that question, because I don't.
Well, is, is the question, Amanda, could we come back 100% with three feet?
Yes. Regardless, like, is it feasible?
I don't, it's not feasible for all our, for all our classes, based on the number of kids who are in our class and the size of the room. Would it be feasible for some of our classes to be three feet in all? And yes, but not all of our classes, three feet. Could, could three feet be in 100% of our kids?
And when will the classrooms be completed?
The ones at Harold Martin's?
Yes.
That's a question for you. Is that the summer?
Yeah, they, they supposedly transfer the keys on September 1st is our goal.
So not till September 1st. So I, I, I kind of feel like, for me, that where there's a will, there's a way. And I definitely have a will to see the students at some point back in. And if it's two weeks in June, 100%, it's two weeks in June, or if it's a month, or six weeks. Anything 100% is better than hybrid, and hybrid is, is definitely better than fully remote. Although hybrid is, I'm sure most parents would agree, half the learning, it really is, i- if that. But it does provide the social piece, which is keeping my, many children socially and educationally engaged. So hybrid is not, is not ideal. So moving forward, I guess I'm concerned that if, to me, it feels like there's a definite stagnation and no plans to at all address the, the three foot going forward. Is that correct?
I didn't say that, so I don't want you to be left with that.
Okay. Okay. So thank you for that little glimmer of hope. So I would like to see, I would like to advocate for some creative thinking around three feet and whether, how we can make that happen in some of our classrooms and how many classrooms that is. I'd actually like a number, how many classrooms that it really isn't feasible in. I would love to see that happen. And then I realized it would take renegotiating of the MOA, but if the teachers get vaccinated, if community rates drop drastically, and we still are sitting here with an MOA of six feet guidance only, we could, we could be missing out on a month of in-person schooling that really would make a difference. So I will follow up with this because I really would like to hear that there was some discussion about the actual feasibility of, of three feet. It's very important to me and to many students in this district. And then looking forward to next year is my last comment. Has there been discussion of 100% all-in return for September of next year? Or discussion of continued hybrid? Has that been discussed?
So Amanda, our, our MOA with the, with the associations expires at the end of the school year, which is, which is June 30th. And so the board and the association, I can either negotiate something different, can negotiate nothing at all. And so that is, that's on our agenda and docket.
And because I'm not privy to your docket, does that negotiation happen in May, June? These sort of things tend to happen not in, on school board meetings, and then we get, find out about them later. And so I'm just wondering when this discussion will be happening. And because I would think there's a lot of community members who would like to weigh in on this.
So I would just suggest that last meeting, the school board had a non-meeting, and non-meetings are negotiations. And I assume we're going to have a non-meeting this evening as well. And so I, I would, I would, I guess that means the process is beginning.
Okay.
So thank you, Amanda.
Thank you for your time, and I encourage you all to consider my comments because it's a growing feeling in the community. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So the next hand we have raised is Dennis Mollner. Excuse me, I'm trying to, there we go.
Hi, just trying to get off mute. Hi, Dennis Mollner, 55, Briar Hill Road. I guess maybe you're starting to see a theme for tonight. There are many parents, including myself and my wife, with children at the middle high school that are really, really having a difficult time with full remote, which, if we're being honest, has, has been the last eight to 10 weeks. The, the couple of days that our kids have been to school over the last 40 or 50 are, are pretty minimal. And even the hybrid approach, and I think the, the governor's request to have everybody back at least two days a week in schooling, I think I would hope that Hopkinton as a, as a leading school district within the state, within the state, would be making every effort to do more than the minimum required by law. And I guess I would like to propose to the board to please come back and tell us when a renegotiation of the MOA will be initiated. I think that there are many people, and I'll put myself in this group, who, who voted three times for the school budget for 2020 and who are not going to vote yes on any school budget or any contract negotiation until there's clarity about when in-school learning is. I can assure you that if it's not going to be attempted for this year, not going to be any votes from us and many other parents. And to be honest with you, as Amanda raised earlier, we'd like to get clarity on next year as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Next hand that's up is Nash, ready?
Good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my comments. And I also appreciate everyone's hard work. This is obviously a very unique and challenging situation, so I do thank you. And I know I've sent out some emails recently for you folks to look at. Just a couple of things I wanted to put out there and then ask a couple of questions for the school board. One is that from my experience, MOUs and MOAs are not legally binding. So it would be in the best interest if the school board and administration wanted to be the voice of the kids and families to reopen that discussion under the guise of the new information that has recently been shared with us through the CDC and also the governor. I would encourage that action. Has anybody had any time to maybe look into that?
Looked into the question of legally binding MOAs or the.
No, they're not legally binding. What I meant was opening up the, the discussion because we have new information. So I would just encourage you to talk about that, maybe tonight in your non-meeting. The other thing I wanted to add for you folks is that, let's see, legally binding, the three feet is really interesting. Which particular document do you guys take that from?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Which document do we take?
Yeah, you're, so you're something about the kids needing to be separated by three feet in school. Can I get clarification on where that came from?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so the school is suggesting, you guys, I believe I heard you guys correctly, that you need to have the kids three feet apart.
So our, our, I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't mean to cut you off, but our, our memorandum of, of agreement and how we've been operating is a six-foot separation.
Okay, I thought I heard you guys say now you could do three. Either way, that's not based on science if the kids have masks on. And I know I've shared with you guys in letters, I work in a school, we have classrooms that are about 10 by 12 in size with four to six kids in them. And we have also, just sharing this to the group, in case those of you don't know, we have never been closed. We follow all the guidelines of DHHS, which is full PPE. We also do the health, health questionnaire before work as well as gloves, as well as lots of cleaning. We have a fogger. We follow all those procedures. And heaven forbid someone be in contact or get sick. Obviously, they don't come into school. So again, to piggyback with what the previous callers had said, that there are other schools open. I understand when everyone closed back in March, obviously, we didn't know what was going on, and we wanted to be safe. Now we have a lot of information, and my concern is simply why we're not moving forward with taking the risks we need to take politically to make sure that we can have the schools open for our families and kids. Some, lastly, I'd just like to say that some of you guys might know my sons. They're great kids. They're very nice people. As I like to say, it broke my heart to say recently that they came to me and said, we don't want to do any in-person learning now because it's just depressing to go in, can't really see my friends, can't really talk to anybody. It was, just broke my heart. This is not acceptable that I go to work every day and we do project-based learning that we're engaging with kids, and yet my own children can't go to school. So I'm very frustrated with this, as you know, and I'm looking into some other options to support this moving forward. I would just like to encourage you to look at the legalese of this and have you guys step up to the plate and do what you need to do to change this MOA because it's not legally binding and you can fix it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next hand this up is Greg Kerr.
Thanks for taking my questions, Jim. And I just wanted to thank Jim. I, I sent some emails to the board earlier today. And I just wanted to thank Jim for getting back to me so promptly. And I know we were kind of sparring back and forth. And, you know, I, it's, like I said, I live with the, my wife and four daughters, so I'm not used to, or I am used to going back and forth with people who disagree with me, but never someone who's so polite about it. So I wanted to just thank Jim for that. And I sent emails, like I said earlier, so I don't want to rehash everything. I've sent my emails to the board, but I just wanted to bring up the fact that, what I was saying to Jim was, I think that, you know, I look at every day here, every day we take risks in life, right? And getting into the car every morning and driving to school with the kids, statistically, we know that's a more dangerous time of day for the kids than, than COVID. There's more danger to the kids from driving in the car, and there's more danger. I think this summer, they said that there was, you know, kids under 25, you had a 300 time more, 300 times more likely to die from drowning than those kids had from dying from COVID. So all my point was, was that I think that, you know, the, the board has done a good job of mitigating the risk. And I don't think the question should be, when can we go back to school when there's zero risk from COVID? I think the question should be, when could the kids go back to school when the risk of COVID is equal to that of other risks that we're willing to take every day in our lives? And I think through the, the actions of the board and the, the CDC recommendations, we're at that point where the, the level of risk is, is equal as it is to any other risk that we take day to day. So, and I encourage you to keep the. So, and I encourage you to keep the option for some of the kids who obviously have underlying conditions who can't go to school or they live with parents, you know, let them stay full remote. I get that, you know, I'm not saying that we should put everyone, but I think for the, the vast majority of the community, the level of risk from COVID at school is, is probably a lesser risk than some of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Next hand that came up, Scott Zipke.
Hi, guys. Scott Zipke, 188 West Ridge Circle. I also teach math at the high school. On kind of a different note, I did want to thank, point out that the work these, that my colleagues and I are doing. I've been really impressed with how everybody in my, in my building has transitioned to synchronous teaching starting this week. And it's just, they're doing two jobs at once. In some districts, you know, they're, they're trying to force monetary compensation. In other districts, they're fighting it and refusing to do it. In our district, we're planning it with our administration. So at the high school, it's been awesome. It's been cool to see that. And then I have kids at each of the elementary schools. And both their teachers are going in at night to drop off packets for the next day. And they're doing multiple jobs, the at-home work and then the in-school work. So really, I've never spoken up to say this at a school board meeting before, but between the efforts of the teaching staff at the middle high school to transition to synchronous teaching and the, the performance that I've seen out of the teachers at Maple Street and Harold Martin, it's been truly awesome recently. And I just wanted to put in my two cents to say publicly, good work, teachers.
Thank you, Scott. And, and before I let you go, I, I just, I want to apologize. I know it wasn't the board who, who said anything, but I, I just want to apologize for the inappropriate comments and the inappropriate description that I think you were referenced as. And so anyway, on behalf of, of me and I think my colleagues here on the school board, I just, I just want to apologize that, 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 that's, that's not a fair description at all. And it's, it's just not appropriate. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. With that, I don't see any other hands raised for public comment. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there is a second opportunity for public comment later in the meeting. So if something pops to mind, you'll have another shot. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and open it up to any comments from the school board. In no particular order, anybody wants to go can hop right in. Oh, and before I do that, actually, before I let any of you guys talk, I just wanted to welcome Mia Richter, our, our second student rep who joined us halfway through public comment. Mia, thank you so much.
I'll be the first. Go ahead. Oh, Rob, are you gonna?
Oh, go right ahead. There's so much.
Real quick. No, I, I just wanted to, I know that it can be tricky watching our, our public meetings and feeling like you want to scream, but I really do want to thank folks and, and let you know that we do read your emails. We certainly take them to heart and think a lot about them. And, you know, think through ways that we can make things happen. I know sometimes folks aren't able to get all of the answers that they hope to get within the meeting. But I also just want to note that that doesn't mean that nothing is happening or that things aren't being thought of or discussed. So I just wanted to put out that clarification.
Thanks, Andrea. Rob?
Sure. So I had things I was going to say, and then I have a few other things I'm going to say. So in regard to the Hopkinton Education Association and its role, in my previous role with that organization, I, I think that it has always been a collaborative effort. It has worked with administration, it has worked with the superintendent, it is most certainly not a mafia. You know, Steve can nod that he's worked with many, many excellent people through the association and with the association, as have principals. And they are there for the best interests of kids. And I'll leave that at that. In terms of, you know, where we go from here in the conversation, then I, I can appreciate people want their kids back in the school full-time. I get it. Everybody wants to be back to normal, full-time. Spent a lot of time in the last few days at the CDC website that was, you know, reposted on February 12th. And went through a series of their documents, the mitigation toolkit, the get ready for in-person learning toolkit, the setting up your classroom toolkit, the teacher staff checklist toolkit. And boy, it sure seems like we have ticked off all the boxes that are there. And the one conundrum that people keep talking about is the distance piece. And while there are, you know, I would say there's, there are a couple of places in there where it says, if possible, where possible. But six feet is the mantra that is repeated over and over and over again in that document. And so, you know, when we are doing masks, we are doing physical distancing, we are doing hand washing, we're doing, we're doing all those things. But the six-feet mantra is what seems to be in that CDC document. So I don't know how we just ignore that. In my personal life, as I'm out and about, I, I don't see anything collapsing. You know, I go shopping at six feet. I go wherever I go, it's, you know, it's encouraging to be six feet. So I know we can, you know, we can disagree and please, you know, if you want to come back in the second one, have this discussion again, but I really don't want to. I am open-minded to change before the end of the year, absolutely. Absolutely. But the current, we are, we are meeting to the best of our capabilities, the guidelines that are now prescribed at the federal level. Somebody had mentioned, you know, the risk politically, it seems like in New Hampshire, the risk politically was three feet for a political reason. We were, we, the governor's office was talking about three feet when everybody else was talking about six feet. So I don't know what the purpose of that was beyond that. Obviously, you could get more kids in school if you stayed three instead of six. So I appreciate, I understand the frustration. We're all frustrated with the circumstances that we're in, but I think everybody is working really hard to make the best of it. And I'm really excited to hear Scott's comments about synchronous is rolling out well at the high school. So that, that's great. And I think I'll sign off for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Seth or Norm?
I'll go next. Yeah, I, I want to say thank you to the community for the comments tonight, you know, you know, as a father of three, as a board member, as taxpayer, we all have an opinion of what we feel is the best for our kids. We love our kids. I love your kids. I love the taxpayers and I love our teachers. And we all have a feeling of what we feel is best for them. And for me, I've said exactly the same thing to any community member that's reached out to me. I'm always open-minded. And there's a lot of questions I have that I typically just can't ask in an open forum that is governed by our size. And, and there's a lot of other things that I, I want to know that I just can't ask right now. And for me, as a board member, you know, it's important that we look at two things. We look at the students that are, that are going to be home with underlying health conditions that aren't not going to be in person. There are still students that are going to be in that situation, making sure that they're still educated and they're still getting it, getting it. The students that are going back, that whatever the board or whatever happens moving forward, having that discussion, what is it? And I'm always open-minded, looking at plans and being able to do what's best for kids, but best for everyone. I've always balanced everybody. We've not always agreed, we've always respected each other. And I've always done what I felt, working with this board, who I think have done a great job operating in a global pandemic. And I personally think all four of you and Steve and our leadership team. Where I struggle significantly is, you know, this, the constant referrals to CDC, this, this, and this article. And, and I, I say, well, what are we looking at? And in real time, what are we supposed to be making our decisions based on? And I want to read one little quick line, and, and this is not, this is to be respectful to this board because they know, they know I'm not meaning to disrespect them. But if you read this one line that came out last week, "In-person instruction should be prioritized over extracurricular activities, including sports and school activities to minimize the risk of transition in schools and protect in-person learning." That was released last week. This board allowed sports, and that's nothing wrong. I'm happy they have season. I'm happy everyone's healthy. My point is, we can't cherry pick one thing off the CDC and run with it. You know, it's a report that's telling us that saying, hey, let's prioritize our kids in school. That is the discussion I want to talk about for three hours and how we can get our kids in school. So we can look at certain sources and we can compare and we can contrast, but in the end, there's a lot of discussions we have to have. And I personally am excited to whatever, whatever comes forward or whatever this board, whatever we can do. I'm open to listening. If it's outdoors, you know, it's getting nicer soon. What can we do outdoors? You know, there's a lot of things we need to think about that starts playing a process. I understand this community wants, this, this community wants something and, and I, and I appreciate that. We have to understand that there's transition going on. You know, we don't know what the plan is of the superintendent for next year. We don't. We just hired the guy last, last week. And there's a lot of other things that are going in motion that this board, I think Andrea said it, a lot of things that people want to know, we just simply just can't put on the table in front of you. So what I ask is, I'm not asking for patience because I know we're almost to the school year. But I do want you guys to understand that we understand, I understand, I can't say we, I apologize. I understand your comments tonight. I understand the private conversations we've had, what you're looking for and that there's a process and that we all have to respect that. I do appreciate all the good work that our district has done, you know, for my students, you know, my kids and your students, everyone, to all our teachers, to Steve and to this board. I thank them. And I understand all the energy that we have when it comes to doing what's best for our students, but we have to look at the big picture that, you know, we just can't cherry pick one thing on a CDC report and forget that there's other things that could have ramifications. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Seth?
Well, I guess I'll say I have two meetings left, I think. And when I look back on my time, I'll look at two things. One will be the superintendent search, which as I said last week, was sort of optimistic, forward-looking future of the district. I really enjoyed it. But I will also think about COVID because obviously we have spent the lion's share of our hours mulling this over, thinking about this, looking at it from every angle. And I, in my professional life, deal with difficult, conscious, confrontational matters, you know, intractable matters, and nothing has been more difficult than COVID. There is no good solution. And so I appreciate people who can see things in black and white. But frankly, it's all gray. And there are layers of problems. And that doesn't mean they can't be solved, but you don't, I, I think we don't even appreciate a lot of the problems. We have many members of our faculty that have serious health conditions that don't allow them to be in classrooms. That's a serious consideration. These, and, and there are many others that layer on themselves. So it's easy to say the solution is X or the solution is Y, and it isn't X or Y, it's some combination thereof. And we are trying to find it. We have been trying to find it since July. No doubt, it's unsatisfactory. This whole thing is unsatisfactory in every way. I hope my colleagues, as they go forward, will continue to try to find the solutions, and I'm sure you will, and I think it's going to get better. But I get concerned when I hear comments like I heard in the public section. I can say this because I really am not going to have a stake in this much longer, but we have to remain together as a community and respectful for one another. I am, I agree with Scott Zipke. What I see every day from the teachers in the middle high school is impressive. And I know, and look, I understand the challenges at the younger levels. And I understand that in-person is better, but I got to be honest with you. I don't think my children have learned substantially less in the 2021 school year than they have in other years. And I think that that's a credit to the teachers. So we can look at it all as bad. We can look at it all as a failure, but that's just not what it is. It is, it is much more nuanced, it is much more layered than that. And I, I'm not asking for people to be patient. I'm asking for people to try to have empathy, which means to try to look at it from someone else's shoes, to try to think about what it would be like to be a teacher with a serious health condition, being told you're going to be in a classroom. These are complicated questions. That's my only point. Be respectful of one another, be tolerant of one another, and try to put yourself in someone else's shoes. And we will be better off as a community in the long run.
Thank you, Seth. Juliet?
Um, I just really quickly want to say that I know I can't speak for all levels of schooling or all kids for that matter. But I, I do understand people's concerns for in-person schooling. But I also think that, that there is still, you know, COVID, that's still a really big thing. People are getting sick. And even though people are getting vaccines, it's going to be until spring, until even 16 and up can get them. And I, I think that safety should be a top priority. And also, I just want to say that I really think that this new schedule of the, of the hybrid has been working very well, especially because some of my classes have been doing it synchronously. And that's been going surprisingly well also. At first, there were technical difficulties. But I just wanted to say in my English class, we had a really nice debate. Same with my history class. There have been ways to make it work. My math class is almost exactly the same in-person and out-of-person. It, I've been learning just as much and I think that's really wonderful. And I just want to commend the teachers on doing a great job of that. And I think that, and you know, there's facilitated learning. A lot of my friends are still in school. So I think that's helping them with their headspace. I think that what's happening right now is actually a really good place to be. And while I understand the push to be in-person, I also think, you know, you can talk about suicide rates, but if we're being completely honest, it's more likely that a kid is going to pass away of some, you know, illness-related thing that gives them COVID. I, I think that the risk with COVID is higher than that with mental health and that everyone is doing their best to, 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 to help their own mental health and that there are things that you can do personally. And really, mental health is a very personal issue. And I think that the school's been doing a great job of trying to help that along. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Juliet. Mia, do you want to provide any comments?
Yeah, first I want to say I agree with like everything Juliet just said, especially I think teachers have been doing a fantastic job and the like classes of mine that have been synchronous have gotten pretty well. And then I also just wanted to say in response to, I know a lot of people would like school to be more in-person than it is like, you know, closer to 100%, maybe three feet of distance. And I just wanted to say that at least from my perspective, I would not feel safe doing that. Like I'm going to be going back in-person with the hybrid schedule once that starts again. But honestly, I'm only going to be doing that because I have senior privileges and I don't have to eat lunch at school. I'm going to eat lunch at home because I have study halls on day one and on day two, I'm probably going to eat in my car. Because I really don't feel safe sitting in a cafeteria with a bunch of unmasked people also eating. And I've heard that that like is a pretty easy way for the virus to spread. So I just wanted to say like, there are a lot of people who don't have senior privileges. There are a lot of people who aren't seniors. And I would feel even less safe eating in-person if like everybody was back in school. So I don't know, I just, I don't think we can assume that like, if logistically, we can put everybody back in the building, it's the best decision from like a safety standpoint, obviously, but also like, I think people need to feel safe in the building.
Thank you, Mia. Juliet, you have something else?
Just very briefly, that's a very good point. I think a lot of parents don't quite understand what it, what the cafeteria scene looks like. Even when I was just back in school briefly for a day, I ended up eating most of my lunch in the bathroom because even from six feet across the table, it, it feels, it's very, if it was at three feet, the, the virus would spread. It's just, it's very packed and there's a lot of people. And it's just, yeah, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration.
Well, both Juliet and Mia, thank you so much for, for sharing your, your thoughts. It's, well, it's one reason that we have student reps on, on the school board to hear your perspective. But I think it's, it's really important, you know, more important, I don't know if it's more important, but it's great to have your perspective brought to these conversations. So thank you so much for, for raising your voices and being brave and sharing them with us. Really appreciate it. And then I, I don't have much to add. I think Seth stole some of my thunder. And then I, I don't have much to add, I think Seth stole some of my thunder. In his comment, but I, you know. I hear a lot that, you know, today, maybe today's public comment was a little over the top in terms of the description or, or the feelings towards the union. And I see others that there's handfuls of teachers that are keeping us from going into school. You know, I, I just want to say like to the public that that's not how this works, that, that's not what's keeping. The district operating the way we're operating. This board, you know, had conversations, had negotiations with our two associations, this board voted unanimously. To enter and into an agreement for how our schools would operate, having health and safety and the education of our students in mind. This board has worked with our teachers association to open schools safely, to work on the ventilation in schools, so it's a partnership. It's, it's, there's not MOAs that are, that are tying the hands of the board, this board entered into these negotiations, entered into this agreement. Knowing what we were doing and unanimous vote. And so to blame in some way. Where we are on, on a handful of teachers is unfair and it's not true. And I, I just hope people will, will stop trying to point blame at teachers. Our teachers are doing. The, what they can do and the best they can do in a very challenging environment as true professionals and I, I know. We had Scott on earlier and we've all commented on that. But I just wanted to raise that because I, I think it's not helpful to the conversation to be trying to blame. A scapegoat, because that's not the case for where we are, we're, we're where we are because the board. And the teachers association wanted to open up following guidance and being, having health and safety in mind, so. I, I just think it's not a helpful dialogue to, to try to point fingers and try to point blame. Instead, we should all be. Working together as, as the board has and will continue to do with our associations. To operate our district to the best of our ability and, and a way that's safe for everybody. In our district, students, faculty, staff and administration. So thank you, thanks to the board for your public comments and Juliette and Mia as well. So we decided to switch around our agenda a little bit and so. I'd like to start with a debrief conversation on SB two. And see where we're at, because Steve, this is an action item because the board has to have an opinion on this, so we'll go into the warrant, our opinion. And so then what, after we do SB two and debrief on that, we'll invite. The school district moderator, James Newsom, to join us and we'll go over the schedule for the meeting. So with that, I would just open it up for, for comments from any board member on, on SB two. And then we'll move forward with, with a motion for how to proceed.
Go, I, I just wanted to echo a lot of what Roger brought up. I really appreciate the. The in-person nature, I, I am looking forward actually to the day when we can all sit. In the high school gym again and have those discussions. But I, I really, I personally feel that you get a lot of really good information there. I know that. There are a lot of other avenues of information, sort of like a game of telephone. Sometimes things can change as they get passed along and so I find. Being able to sit and have the firsthand information, get your questions answered and listen to folks is really important to me. So I, I personally am not, I am not in favor of SB two.
I, I too am opposed to SB two, I think that what Roger and Andrea said is key and I also think that. We pride ourselves on being a community, well, that means we do things as a community, that's what makes it special. And there are a handful of things we do. One of those things we do is we show up together at this town meeting and have this community experience. And if we continue to eliminate community experiences because of the, the convenience. Ultimately, you degrade the community. And I think that. In, in addition, the point about the information availability, I think is key. It is helpful to have a moment when the information is shared, you know, this is not. The election for President of the United States, you know, it's not, you know, the, the, the availability of information is not the same. As it is for high profile elections where you have, you know, just a flood of information coming at you. So if you get rid of town meeting and we're not, and we're not all sharing the same information, then you're subject to. Game of telephone misinformation and the ability to correct that as we see in the drive-through is difficult. We've spent a lot of time thinking about how are we even going to get our point across? Because we're not going to have the community moment to share with the community what we think about the budget. And, you know, I think that we would be losing a lot if we get rid of that, so I am opposed to SB two.
I, I guess I'll go next unless Norm wants to jump in, but I would concur with Andrea and Seth for the same reasons. And with what Roger Turcot said as well, so I won't repeat those things. I also think that there are a lot of misnomers about SB two and what it actually does and will do in terms of how budgets are controlled. There had been some discussion in the past about people's ability to go to school district meeting. And, and I'd speak to that just for a moment because there are years when I was not able to go to school district meeting because of coaching obligations. And, and I, you know, I missed that opportunity. But I certainly wouldn't sacrifice. That school district meeting so that I could vote at a drive-through. I think that. Part of what makes New England communities, small New England communities, what they are, are these district meetings. And I, I agree completely that that sense of community and knowledge that comes from sitting on the floor and listening. Pros and cons, I, I myself have gone in thinking one thing and gone out thinking something else because. I got a lot more information there. So I'm, I'm wholeheartedly opposed to SB two. I think you would have too many people that are voting that may not have all the information they need.
Yeah, and, and I'll just pick up from where you guys said, you know, for me. It's about being informed about what goes on into the budget, you know, and for me, this town elects five select, select board. Watch like members, either school board and we have a budget committee oversees what we produce. And, and for me, it's important that we continue to have these deliberate sessions in person. I've always enjoyed, I always enjoyed those, I miss it, I miss it a lot, I'll miss it this year, I didn't get the opportunity last year, but I've always enjoyed that in-person learning. When questions were asked in real times, the amendments, the booing and all that stuff. But I think one thing that's important was is, you know, I, I keep hearing, you know. Norm, people are pressured in, pressured in to vote in yes in person if they're a business owner. And I just want to say that, that there's no pressure because there, there is a way around, around that with five signatures. The warrant automatically goes into about. If I'm, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, I'm sure James will correct me. So there's no pressure. You have the opportunity to, to vote in confidence, no one knows about it and there's no pressure to say yea or nay based on how you feel. And, and that was one thing that was flowing around that there, around the community saying, hey, you know, I, I get pressured at meetings, I'm like, well, there's ways. Find four friends and you're good to go. So I oppose it, you know, I think it's important we continue to have oversight from this board, from our select board, you know, from the budget committee. Where we, we know what goes into the budget and we continue the process that way. Thank you Jim.
Thanks Norm. So, I mean, I share similar opinions to the rest of my colleagues and, and the only, I mean, I'm, I'm. And sometimes I'm a process guy and, and so I just. Look at the process that we currently have with, with town meeting and, and it's worked here for a couple hundred years. The process seems to work as we get through it every year. And then, you know, I look at the process of SB two and I'm not sure that's a better process. Actually, I'm sure that it's not a better process and so I'm not quite, I, I'm not convinced that what we have today. In our form of government is broken, that we need to adjust to something different and I haven't heard any arguments that have been convincing to me. That our process is broken and that we knew, we need to create a new process. Because we have some sort of fatal flaw in our school district, our school district annual meeting. And, and Roger and, and all of you have, have sort of articulated my other thoughts, but. So what I'm hearing, I'm getting the sense, actually it's more than the sense, I, I think. I have a pretty good sense of where this board's at and so. I would just ask if there's a motion from the Huffington School Board, actually let me pull it up so I get it right. Is there a motion from the Huffington School Board? Does not support SB two, the official ballot form of governance? Any discussion or any further discussion?
So to make sure I'm clear, because I, it kind of bounced in and out a little bit and we're in a vote, so a yes is we oppose, correct?
Correct, so the motion is that the Huffington School Board does not support SB two.
Thank you Jim.
Thank you, no, no, I, I screwed up on reading it too, so that, the motion, so a yes vote would be you do not support SB two.
That's great, thank you Jim, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, no further discussion. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
Seth Afrim, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes and so the Huffington, our position on the SB two warrant will be to not support it by a vote of five to zero. Thank you all and with that, we will ask Mr. Newsom to join us. And we'll have a conversation, for those who are following along, we are going to be under. Agenda item number nine. C, annual meeting, this annual school district meeting preparation. James, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So I'm going to hand it over to you and Steve, I think, to lead us through this part.
Sure, I'm happy to start and then James can confirm and Andrea as well, who's been very much in this. So on the set, the second part of the school board schedule are proposed dates and process for the annual meeting. And this, this was worked through on, on a March twentieth. Drive-through voting, so March third, we, by then we will have the public notice posted and we will have the mailing sent. Everybody okay with that? Andrea, under duty assignments, it seems like Andrea has already started just formulating that. We are not going to handle that in-house this year, it's, it's every registered voter and so the mailing label and things like that. It's, it's really doubled or tripled the amount of work to do it in-house. Our first meeting and then we need to know date and time, James, so our first meeting is going to be March thirteenth, Saturday, that would be session one. The reason why nine AM was put in there as a draft, we used in the old days, right, start the annual meeting at nine, but if you would like to move that time. Is there a time you'd like to start? That would be virtual, number one, that will be simulcast with YouTube and Zoom. And it will be the opening session of our annual meeting.
I like nine AM, just fine.
Everybody okay with nine? Everybody okay with the thirteenth? This is an action item tonight. Okay, up next then, we open up. Public comment on March fourteenth. After the annual meeting and we'll close it at five o'clock on March sixteenth. Andrea, does that sound right to you?
Yep, the only thing we needed to know specifically is there a time on Tuesday the sixteenth that you would like? All comments via voicemail or email to be into by. I had, I think, five PM, but that's your prerogative, Mr. Newsom.
That works for me.
Great.
And I apologize, I think you can just step back a little bit, so on March thirteenth, we will present the warrants article by article. And then there's a specific public comment, where the board has an opportunity to accept public comments after that, you know, the original presentation. My assumption is that we will, I just want to make sure that the board agrees that we will have public comments that. You know, at that first open meeting. Everybody okay? Then we go to the, then we open up public comments at the sixteenth at five and then we have on March seventeenth. Again, we need a start time, that's our second meeting. James, this is where you'll present the summary of comments, questions, articles to be amended. And then the school board discussed debates and, and could amend the warrant for the final one. What time would you like to start on the seventeenth?
Does six PM work?
It's fine with me Captain.
Yep, that sounds great.
And then would the board like public comments at that meeting?
So that meeting will be, we'll, we'll hear from James, kind of a rundown of what he's received for comments and then the board will. Discuss any amendments, is that, I just want to make sure I'm following, so.
Yep, you're doing great.
Yeah, so at that second session is when the board has the opportunity and the, then the duty to consider. Amending any warrant articles, so that'll be, and determine the final questions on the warrant to be voted upon.
So it feels like in this. It feels like we're, we're providing. Ample opportunity starting on, on Saturday and then multiple days for comments. So I'm not, I guess at that point, I'm not sure that more public comment. I don't know, I'm just trying, I'm trying to think through what more public comment at that point will help us with, but.
No, I think you're right, I think closing it at the five o'clock and then giving it all to board consideration, I think is the cleanest approach.
How do other members feel?
I would agree, I think that at that point. It would be very cumbersome to have more public comment. Essentially, we're trying to boil it down to what those amendments will be if there are any amendments.
Yeah, I agree with you Rob, thank you.
And legally, legally speaking, the only time that you're legally obligated to hear public comments is the. Email or voicemail, what other, what other format between the two information sessions. There's no obligation to take public comment at the, at one or either session. But I think that you guys are. Considering taking it at the first one, which I wholeheartedly agree with that position.
And, and is everybody okay? We're, and then the last one, March twentieth, drive-through voting. James and I did discuss with Andrea if one site or not, because right, remember we have to have an official ballot distributed and completed at the site. James, I think you recommended, I hope I got it right, eight to two, does that sound right?
Eight to two is what I'd like to do, that worked. Fine for the second and third session of voting last year. Where we had the four checking tables that increased throughput sufficiently for that, so.
So this may be a dumb question. But I'll ask it anyway, because I know we did it last year, but so SB two requires, you know, one hour ballot vote, but I assume in that. The fact that we're doing a drive-through satisfies the statutory requirement for the, you know, one hour open ballot.
What do you mean by SB two?
So SB, SB two's going to be on the ballot, well, it's going to, it's, it's, it's going to be warned, we had, we had a petition.
Okay, yeah, the, the warrant, yeah, the warrant article for, for SB two, okay.
Correct, so yeah, so the statute says that, you know, we have to have the ballot open for an hour, I'm assuming the fact that.
We're having it open for six hours.
Just make, want to make sure.
Yep, it's six hours, so.
Michelle, did you grab all those times and dates? What, what's going to happen tonight is Michelle will finalize the warrant. And then by really eight thirty-nine tomorrow morning, I need three board members to come by the S U to sign. And then we have a deadline to get it to Neil for the annual town report about eleven thirty. So that's, if, if we're okay, Norm, I'm sorry if I interrupted you, I apologize.
No, I, I was raising my hand and I'll, I'll come by and help you sign one, so.
Great, so if we can have three, at least, we love all five, we love you all. But we need three pretty early, Michelle's going to be there, it'll be all ready. And then by, if we can get it done by nine, nine thirty, I know we sleep better when we get it to Neil and, and Robin early that day.
That's at your office Steve?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And so those are the dates that will appear, we work with Tom Berry on making sure that all these dates, times, locations, as well as James, is your email. Tom recommended, I think you're on some of those emails, that your contact information is provided, if there are any questions, you are the arbiter of all that fun stuff. Everybody okay?
Yep. I have a, I have a question about the actual drive-through voting day and location. So last year, we obviously got a little bit lucky with weather. Generally speaking, March twentieth, as we all know, can be, could be a wild card. So do we simply going with a default weather date? Or can anybody think of any place in town that has a canopy where we could actually have people driving so they'd be undercover?
The problem with that is, I, I don't think we have anything big enough because the need to fill out the ballots as well. Will add more time, so because we have advice from the AG's office. That the printed home ballots are not allowed. This year, so we will need to hand the ballot out when they check in. So we may have to rearrange the logistics a little bit to provide a little bit better parking. So we may have to rearrange the logistics a little bit to provide a little bit better parking at the high school. That doesn't help with weather, of course. So I think we'll just have to kind of roll the dice and like we do on a regular meeting, that even though we're inside at a regular meeting, we could get that foot snowstorm and, and have to reschedule. If the weather is truly that bad, we, I will look at that and consider rescheduling if need be. Hopefully won't have to.
Rob, we'll make sure we give plenty of hand warmers for the officials.
Hand warmers and tents. I think tents is the key with plenty of things to weight them down. That, that's.
Thank you. James, is that, is, are you all right? Is that, cover that? We've got a few more just logistical pieces, but I think for your piece, it's those dates, times and operations.
I, works for me. As much as I, as much as I'd love to give that podium a hug in the gym. I think we're not quite there yet this time around. And with the need to get the next year's teachers' contracts all lined up by mid-April. I think we're really kind of looking at, this is the best alternative that we're facing. As everything you guys have been talking about, nothing's ideal, but this is the best thing we got going. So I appreciate your help and support through this process.
And this is an action item tonight to make sure we codify it with board action, so Michelle can do the voodoo that she has to do.
Great. Well, thanks, James. Thanks for joining us. And we'll see you, if not before, but we'll see you on March thirteenth.
I'm sure we'll have some, some other planning meetings, but if anything comes up through this evening, Steve knows how to get ahold of me, so.
Thanks.
I will be signing off otherwise.
Thanks, James.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
So Steve, do you want to stick with this agenda and talk about presentations and assigned articles?
Sure. Just want to keep going. So just as we get to March thirteenth will be the opening. Jim is board chair. You'll open the meeting and all that fun stuff. And then if you want to quickly, if you want me to just lead through some quick article stuff?
That, yeah, that'd be great if you have it in front of you, Steve.
Yep, sure. So typically, we assign the articles early and then Michelle and I will work with any board member on any article to provide you the information you'd like. So Article two is the budget. Norm, we thought the right, that you'd lead the budget. Article three is the HEA proper. Typically, that's the negotiation chair, Jim. Are you all set leaving the HEA first article?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And Andrea, the second article, which is the special meeting, if you would address that. And then we go, Rob, fund balance is Article five. That's the increasing from two and a half to five. If you would take that as the finance, we've talked about that in the finance. Norm, the Article six is utilizing interest from the project for the project as the chair of the building committee. Does that work for you? Seven, Seth, on the technology trust, you would take lead on the establishment of the technology trust fund? And speak to that on the thirteenth? How's that?
Sure.
And then the fund balance, which is really connected to the CIP. So Jim or Andrea, we will have a CIP meeting before that, I promise.
Andrea, do, can you take that one?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Great. And Seth, Article SB two?
Sure.
And then Jim, you want to close it and just thank everybody?
That's a good job. I can thank everybody.
Isn't any other business. So typically, if we do have a board member that's leaving, which I think we do have a board member, you can certainly talk about that. Cool beans or not? Again, Michelle and I are available to provide any data, you know, and we typically put some stuff together for you. But we'll work on that. And if you have any questions, we're happy to help. For support materials. It's a little bit different. In the past, we've done rack cards, we've done table tents, we've done elevator cards. We are already planning and started the development of this annual school district newsletter. If you remember, it's like a summary. So we'll get that out. We will make sure all the materials from FAQs that Ms. Gumm spoke, we'll make sure everything's readily available. But we will email the newsletter out. And of course, Andrea has started the mailing, which will be set to go out as well. Everybody okay? And then Matt Stone and Angie have already started with YouTube links. And tomorrow we'll have the webinar links for the thirteenth and the seventeenth. And so those will be ready to go. And they will be simulcast. We will have unlimited people, you know, through YouTube, we'll have unlimited people who can watch. Everybody okay?
Think so.
And then just a quick reminder, Norm, you and I all set for the PTA in the fifth? And Rotary.
Yep.
And Rotary on the tenth. And I know that people should grin in sadness. I talked to Ms. Dunlop today and there's no plans to see sweets for Steve. So it'll have to be next year. Cookies with Cass is taking years hiatus as well. Feeling that the Zoom format really wouldn't hit that clientele we were trying to reach with, with cookies and sweets. But we nailed that today. Nailed that down today. But everybody feel pretty comfortable where we are on the annual school district meeting prep? I want to make sure everybody's okay.
Yeah. And thank you for, you know, all the work Steve, you and Andrea have done to sort of get the dates lined up, get all the information out. I'm happy, actually very happy that we're not stuffing them and trying to fold it ourselves. It's, it's great to have a vendor doing that. I think it's going to be much more efficient and probably give a couple more years to the life of our copier.
Yes, I, I can't thank you enough, especially with the, every registered voter with, which requires a specific address versus every door delivery. That is a huge change. So I do actually think it's going to be cheaper overall to the district just because of the cost. So no, I'm very appreciative of that as well. So is my son, by the way, he did some stuffing last year as well.
Is everybody, everybody, everybody all set with the prep? All right. Thanks, Steve. So we'll move back up, up the agenda to A, in operating and learning in a pandemic. And Steve, we're going to hand it over to you to give some updates where we're at.
Happy to. I'm going to bump up Chris and Rebecca just when we get to the second one, if that's all right?
That sounds great.
There's Rebecca and there's Chris. Well, sometimes they bump around. I lost Chris. Oh, he raised his hand. Tricked me. So just to, as they start settling in on, just, I've been giving a board meeting and weekly update to the community. At Hill Martin School, as of this morning, we have two students in quarantine. We have no staff positive or no, no students positive, just two in quarantine. At Maple Street School, we have one student in quarantine. And at the high school, we have three students in quarantine and one in isolation. So that's the current where we are in cases as of this morning and checking with the nurses. And so the next piece, and thanks, Chris and Rebecca for, for joining on this off, off meeting. So a couple of weeks ago, we started just taking a look at our next iteration, our March first post-February. And Mia and Juliet, thank you for already alluding to the changes that we've talked about in May. Now I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Rebecca just to talk to where we are in the move to synchronous learning. And just, there aren't any changes right now planned at the elementary school. That's why I think they might be on Amy and Bill, but they're, they're okay with it tonight. Chris and Rebecca, thank you very much.
Sure, Steve. And thanks again for allowing us to visit with the school board and just talk about our plans for the future. Before I jump in, I, I know I would regret the opportunity to again, just thank our staff for the work that they have been doing. Both Rebecca and I have had the opportunities to either virtually jump into classes or to stop into classes to see what the teachers have been working on to deliver their curriculum, to work on implementing synchronous learning, to take chances, to be brave and to be bold as they implement new technology. Many of our staff weren't comfortable with the technology. But they have been working hard to learn the new technology. If you walk into some of the rooms, it looks like they could have landed the lunar, the Mars mission today with several computer screens set up. And they're becoming more comfortable with the technology. As, as you alluded to, Jim being one of the top high schools in the state, middle high schools in the state. And I've said it before in public and in the board meeting, that, that is truly because of our staff. They have continued to uphold our school district mission statement to, to, to care for our students, to work with our students. I have appreciated the opportunity to work collaboratively with the union leadership. And I know Rebecca has too. And, you know, in any organization, there's not always agreement, but we've continued to work together in, in the best way possible to, to put together our plans through a very difficult year. So I just want to continue to thank our teachers. Trying to keep their morale up too. This week, we've had the opportunity to, to see teachers in their fun hats or college sweatshirts or today was Hawaiian shirt day. So I have mine on underneath. I didn't think it was as appropriate to wear to school board meeting. But Steve did compliment it on three different occasions today. So and Mr. Wallner and I were actually twins. I think we had the same shirt on. So that was, that was a lot of fun. So and then tomorrow will be Hawk Pride Day. So before we leave for vacation. So thank you for giving me that moment. So as I said, we've been working towards the synchronous implementation. Donna Zeca, Matt Stone and Mike Cody deserve a lot of credit with helping to offer the PD. We had a professional development opportunity yesterday after school that some teachers came to participate in, just to see how to implement the use of the cameras that we had available, document cameras. I believe Bob Wallner is going to test drive a camera that will follow him around in the classroom. So we have one of those. So we're trying some new technology. So we can see the entire classroom or the students at home can see the teacher as they're moving about the classroom. And as I said, multiple, utilizing multiple screens in the classroom, so the teachers can see the entire class on the screen. And then have their own computer to utilize, to present the material that they're teaching to throughout the day. So looking forward to just seeing that all come together. And as we've been putting out and you've heard here, we've talked about to the fullest extent possible. I do believe there's some areas within our curriculums that, that the synchronous piece would be a little bit more difficult. And I think, you know, foods would be one of those areas. I know Dave Chase is working hard to implement it, but at times it, it won't work as well. Adventure Ed is something that needs to happen in person. So I've worked with him on how, how we can possibly do that. And the weather is hopefully going to get warmer. So they'll do more things outdoors. So we'll look forward to that. So, you know, I do believe that we, you know, in order to go fast and I have to go slow. And I think that's been kind of, you know, the, the route we've taken. And then looking forward to the week after February vacation from March first through April vacation, what we'd like to propose is a schedule or structure very similar to what we did this past spring. Where Monday and Tuesday, we would have Team A in the building and Team B learning synchronously at home. And then Team B would be in the building on Thursday and Friday with Team A learning synchronously at home. And what this would do is it would open up Wednesdays for us, where in the morning from eight till about eleven thirty would be time for reassessment and re remediation and working with students. It would also allow us to connect with some of our students who attend CRTC, who sometimes miss some instructions. So that would allow our teachers to touch base with them and get them caught up or reteach some materials. It all, this schedule also helps us out with the SATs. On March twenty-fourth, we have the SATs. That's a Wednesday. That means there wouldn't be any students in the building and we would be able to take the entire junior class and separate them, socially distance them in the classrooms to administer the SAT, because I, I don't know why, but the, the, the state has said that, or the SA or the college board has said that it has to be paper pencil. So it's not, we don't have the option like we did with, let's say, the AP test that we're able to do those digitally. Now, why they're allowing AP tests to be done digitally, but not the SAT, I, I don't know. In a principals' meeting today, the, the feeling amongst principals across the state is that the state's really trying to meet contractual obligations. And that's why it's still paper pencil. So we really, I really need the building that day. If it ends up being another schedule, then I, we would, it would have to be a full remote day. So we would have to bring the juniors in, because I just don't have another place to, to put our junior class. So that schedule would, would help with that. As you may have seen, because I believe you're on the list serves as well. Rebecca and I started thinking about, you know, the, the week after vacation and we like, we, we need to collect some data, but we haven't had a chance to present to the school board yet. So she had a conversation with Steve about can we get the, the survey out sooner than later? So we, we sent the survey out and as of, I think, five, ten tonight, we had about three hundred and forty-seven responses. Two hundred and eighty-one of those responses have chosen to go the hybrid model if, if this plan is approved. And sixty-six students so far, or families have chosen to stay fully remote. And we have about four hundred and sixty-nine students in the building. So that gives you an idea of our numbers right now. Right now, the, there is a plan tomorrow to start making some phone calls. We have a small team of people that will start making that, because that's about a hundred and twenty phone calls. So that's what we'll be looking to do as we move forward. And again, I think this model will work because we'll have the synchronous piece. We're still building in the academic support. I think coming towards the end of the year, that's going to be very important for some of our students who have struggled academically. I know I'm still having conversations with our SST team members or our school counselors about some students they have concerns with. We're also getting into that time, time of year where some triennials need to happen for students who have IEPs or other services. We could utilize those Wednesdays where we don't have to take them out of academic time as well to, to offer some of those services. I've also let teachers know, because they would be in the building on those, on that Wednesday, that if they did want to meet with a student in person, that they would be able to do so if they wanted to think differently about how to do a reassessment. Sometimes our teachers have done it orally. So they will pull a student in and just meet with them for a half an hour. So we would, we would have that option as well if, if, if the Wednesday in this schedule was able to move forward. Class, class time would be about seventy-five minutes. And we would still have a time for academic advisory on the in-person days as well. We felt that that was still important to, to hold in place. And we would still main maintain the mass breaks during those periods when the students were in school, so that they, they just get that break. So that's, that, that's really what we're proposing in a nutshell. I didn't do a whole presentation, because, you know, it's really the whole, it's the whole, it's, it's the same type of schedule, at least as structure-wise as we did in the spring. And happy to answer any questions.
It's the four days of new learning with synchronous that is the really the, the evolution of where we come and one day to support. And even some of the need for remediations come across my plate where parents are really anxious to get some extra time with kids. So Chris and Rebecca, thank you. And, and for my thanks to the faculty and staff who's embracing this and is trying something new. So thank you.
And just one piece I forgot to mention is Wednesday afternoons. That is, that would be time for teachers to continue to plan or collaborate. Because as we're going synchronous, it is a different type of planning, because you're planning for the students in front of you and then the students at home. So planning how those activities may work or work best. I think they're just going to need a little bit extra time to plan for that. And, you know, I, I know that they would appreciate that extra time. Just to make sure that we're doing everything we can. As I've said before, our teachers want to do it right and they want to do it right the first time. But, you know, I, I think of everything that we've seen and as our student reps of the board have, have alluded to tonight, our, our teachers are really working hard to, to make it work. And, you know, two years ago, I started the school district, my, my school district or building meeting, you know, reminding them that we can't let fear be, be the barrier to our success. And there's been some fear with utilizing the technology, but I could tell you that they haven't, they, they've, I think they've overcome that. So I'm really proud of them.
I got a couple of questions for you. It's still plenty of time for people to submit their surveys instead, you know. Still okay. I got, I got the email. I was guilty. I'll admit it. That's, it's fine. I filled it out. But my, my question for you, Chris, is I experienced synchronized teaching and I, I saw the difficulties that went behind it. And I'm very happy here. We're moving forward at some capacity with it. Could you walk me through the testing of it a little bit and how it worked with our teachers? And maybe talk a little bit about how the training process has been for them to get used to this new teaching method, because I'm, I'm happy to hear they're, they're engaged in doing this. But I want to know a little bit about the teaching, about the testing part of it. So.
Sure, thanks. I appreciate the question. I, I think teachers. Sure, thanks. I appreciate the question. I think I think teachers, there was some trial and error. Teachers in working and talking with Matt Stone and working with Donna Zeca. In regards to, you know, what are some of the best or or best pieces of technology, but easy to use pieces of technology. And we we kind of relied a little bit on, or I did, just seeing how the teachers who kind of really just dove into it. Seeing Scott Zipkey set up in his room with the two different screens, teachers are now logging into their Google meets twice. And in his room, he has the camera up top. So he can really see the entire classroom or the students at home can see the entire classroom. We in the in the training that we did yesterday, every every time I go to the library, Donna Zeca shows me something else. And in some of the technology is is really good technology and some is very simple. So as simple as. They, you know, having a, I'm trying to remember the name of it now, but there's a. It's a little foam piece that has has a mirror in it that you put on top of your laptop and it turns your laptop into a document projector or or camera. And then on top of the your keyboard is a whiteboard. So if you're a math student or any, it doesn't matter. I mean, in any subject, if you have a lot of writing. You could write down and the teacher can see what you're writing down at home. So something as simple as that is easy to use for a teacher. And I I just think the teachers have just taken those steps. They've done some research on their own. We've offered that training after school yesterday. Several weeks ago, we had sent out a slideshow presentation that Donna and Matt had worked on and put together. That also talked about some of the technology. And then if they wanted to, they could fill out a Google form that she had put together. And that's what led her to kind of key in on what technology she needed to order. And we let those, we let the staff members know what was in the library. If they wanted to come and try it out sooner than later, they could. But the staff are really diving into utilizing document cameras. In in placing the 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 camera in a in a place in the classroom where they can see the entire classroom from home. The utilization of the two two laptops or two monitors has been have been like, I would say the three pieces of. Of key technology. The other, the other piece is is a better microphone. We've had better microphones that we've installed as well, so that so we can hear at home. So it doesn't matter if a student's in the back of the classroom and the microphones in in the front. The people at home, the students at home can hear pretty well.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that.
I don't know if Rebecca wanted to add anything to that with just her observations. But I know, I think I heard her say that she was in Scott Zipkey's personal finance class today. So I know that she probably saw that in, you know, in person. But I also saw Scott set up in person. We actually held a scheduling meeting in that classroom. Because some of our staff were in different parts of the building. So, you know, we we kind of had an opportunity to see it all coming together.
I think you covered that well, Mr. Kelly. I just want to say a very public thank you to all the. The parents who very kindly filled out those surveys. I sent out a plea this morning asking for more responses and wow, did people deliver. So. We appreciate it. Our phone bank will be a little less tomorrow. We are definitely still taking survey results from people. And then those that we don't hear from, we will call because we we are looking for a hundred percent knowing who wants to come in and who wants to be remote still. So thank you to everyone.
And one other thing Rebecca reminded me in a in a text that. So March ninth is is voting. So March ninth is a Tuesday, as you know, but we would make that our Wednesday for that week.
We'll adjust the schedule right because we want for voting and talk to Neil, just say for everybody to have very few people in the building. Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts for Chris and Rebecca?
Rob must have a question. Rob always has a question.
Chris, it's okay.
He asked for it.
I don't have a question, but thank you for all the work and thanks to all the teachers for. Figuring out how to make it happen. It is greatly appreciated.
No, go for it.
I always also have questions. Um, so I was wondering, so it's interesting that so two eighty one. At least now want to come in and sixty six will be staying remote. How many kids? Ended up coming in during this most recent period of facilitated remote?
Who's just over, yeah, it was just over about a hundred students.
Okay, all together, you know, coming in most days. Okay, so with the. I guess one of my questions about the new hybrid model, or I'm sorry synchronous model, which I have to say, I really appreciate. I appreciate the teachers stepping up and and learning the new technology. I'm glad that we're at this point. That makes me really happy. I was wondering why we have like Team A coming in Monday, Tuesday. And then I understand the Wednesday and then the second team coming in Thursday, Friday. It seems that. There will then be five days of kids not being in the building and I just wonder. Kind of what the thought is behind behind grouping them like that with so much time between in-school periods.
Yeah, I I think for me, I and that's a fair question. It was the cohort model, you know. Having that Team A in the building for two days back to back. And then on Wednesday would be the teacher, excuse me. But we would be able to do some cleaning and that sort of stuff. And if if on that Tuesday. A student showed up to school and had symptoms, then we get them out of school. It gives us an opportunity to get. Things under control, do our contact tracing. And work with Amy Cook, who's been phenomenal this year to work with. It's been a lot of work for her too. And then the same thing on that Thursday, Friday, you know, if we had that opportunity, well, I don't want to say opportunity, but if if we had that scenario present itself. It gives us some some time to work before the next group comes in.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it that makes sense to me. You know, it also though seems like if you had a kiddo come in on Monday. Then they started showing symptoms on Tuesday, but they were out. If you had kind of staggered it. And then no one was in on Wednesday, you would still have kids wouldn't, the same group wouldn't be in the building then for two days. And then would be back in. And so it it also seems like. I guess I would just ask to to think about that a little bit. I I do worry about having. A five-day break where kids are not in school. I know we've heard a lot of. Even when we're synchronous and even when kids are able to engage over the computer, struggling to. Maintain that contact with school. And I worry that the five days of of not being in is. Is just going to be tricky. And so I I don't know if there's any possible consideration for like a Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. Where they're at least having that touchstone a little more often.
Right, and I appreciate that. I I this also allows us to keep a day one, day two rotation.
Okay.
So if we if so, if we took your model that you're talking about and we had Team A come in on a Monday. And that was day one and Team B came in on a Tuesday as a day two. They're always in only on a day two.
Yep. Yeah, that makes sense.
They wouldn't have the opportunity to see their their teacher face to face.
Okay.
One of those.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate that. Thank you. I think I've said before, not having a kiddo in the middle high school, sometimes I just will have questions that.
No, I don't mind the question, no.
Andrea, we did explore exactly what Mr. Kelly said. I mean, the other thing too is if we went like day one, day one, so that everybody could see everybody. You'd have two of your same classes in a row. And I I do appreciate what you're saying about not being physically in the building for five days. But I I would, I would offer a shift that you will be in classes. You know what I mean? And that's a really important thing. It's not unstructured when they're home. They are in their physical class receiving live instruction. So. I think that's an important nuance. They're not days off. They're not, you know, days for you to decide when you want to do your work. You are expected to be in your classes. And if you're not there, you're getting those phone calls. So we'll be working on that to make sure that happens.
And did, I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask one more follow-up question. Did it? Do you explore it all like having a Monday as the kind of reevaluation day? And then during the Tuesday through Friday, the day one, day two, day one, day two?
Yeah, I mean, everything was on the table. We went back to the Wednesday because and I don't know if Juliet or Mia want to talk about. You know, the some of the benefits of the Wednesday. Breaking that up in the middle of the week for students with just the screen time and allowing them to. Stay ahead of some of their work. I think we're, I think we're also going to be playing a little bit of catch-up. In talking with, who was I talking to? I was talking to Mr. Bizard recently. And he's about, he's about a month and a half behind or a month behind, two units behind. So. You know, we're we're hoping as we move into the synchronous model, we'll continue like I met, like I had reported, I think back in January. We're we're making, we're making some ground up. I don't know if we'll make it all up. But we're certainly making up some ground and I appreciate Seth's comment because I I do believe there's some really good learning still happening. It's just at a different pace.
Chris, I misspoke. I did have one question.
Okay.
I think I got distracted by somebody who brought me a Girl Scout cookie. But anyway. And they were lemon and they were terrific, by the way, in case anybody hasn't bought Girl Scout cookies yet. So what about the facilitated kids? Are they still going to be coming in all the time or how's that working? You may have spoken about that and I missed it. So I apologize.
Well, I think if if we took the list of the facilitated students that we've had over the last couple of weeks, we probably see that they're they're coming in on the. On the hybrid synchronous piece. But I also know that I talked with Rebecca today, I talked with her about. Speaking with Holly Sharon, our building director of special education and talking with them about. You know, those students who have IEPs that may need to come in all four days. That's what we've done before. So we'll continue to do that moving into this next phase.
Great, thanks.
Any, Andrea, another question?
A little more questions. Just a couple. I'm sorry. So I was wondering for kids who, so I know some kids have been going, you know, four days with the. Facilitated remote. And now they're going to be kind, they're only going to be going two days. And and I. I completely understand that they will still be logging into the computer. Is there a way for parents to contact you even if they don't have an IP or if their IP doesn't necessitate all four days? For them to to reach out to you to see about getting four days? Will the classes basically have enough room to support a little bit? A little more than half of the the students or are we really at the max capacity?
We're, we're really at the max. When we, when we first went to this hybrid model, we we had some students who. Started fully remote and it just wasn't working for them. It wasn't working for them for a list of reasons. And then they started coming back because remember we had that, we we kind of had that open door policy, if you would. And so we worked hard with this. It it really hit the school counselors hard because they were really trying to manage class size of twelve. And also trying to work out schedules where we were able to get the students back in. So there were some instances where students who would have fallen under Team A came in under the Team B day, just because that's where we had more room. So it was a lot of massaging of schedules. But I think because of just the direction, and we're not the only school discussing this, in the principal's meeting this morning, it is, it it is across the state. Of them discussing what models are best for them to move forward into the spring with. So we're 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 not in any different position than anyone else. But it it just becomes really hard to 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 say, well, if you want to come in, great. If not, then you want to stay home, that's fine too. It really has to be one or the other. And that's something else that I wanted to make sure I I talked about because we said to Steve, I said, Steve. If we're going to do this, you know, once they're in, they're in through February vacation. If they're going to, if they're going to be fully remote, they're going to stay fully remote until April vacation. Because we can't do that in and out piece. And then we'll reassess as we get closer to April vacation. As someone in public comment asked earlier, you know, what are we going to do in the spring? Well, we don't know. We don't know what's where we will be as far as the health of the state or our community. We hope to be much healthier than we are now. And we'll we'll take, we'll take a look. Look, I want everybody back. I'm not going to lie about that. I mean, we're, we're already starting our discussions, believe it or not, about. You know, what prom looks like or could look like and what graduation could or would look like. So, you know, we're really thinking ahead about the 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 end of the year as well. You know, but even if we went to the three feet, to be honest with you, I just, maybe we would get up to fourteen kids in a class. Because we also have to take in consideration how we have to separate the tables in the classrooms. So when we're in full in normal times, we can consolidate our ta- our tables and and make small conference room tables in different, in the classes. But then they're two feet apart in those situations or sitting right across from one another. So that it, that's what, that's another piece that makes it hard is just the the physical plant of the building and how we make that work. But I'm, but I want, I mean, as an, I I can't, you know, I'm a school administrator because I like to work with kids. I like to work with our staff. I we want kids in the building. You know, it was like an apocalypse last spring when I walked in, the place was empty. And and I saw, I literally would see agendas from March thirteenth on the whiteboards. For for an entire, well, several months at that point. And so that's not the way to run a school. That's not what we got in the business to do. So as soon as we can do it and do it safely, that's what I want to do. I think this is a certainly a step in the right direction as we get ready to wade further into the waters of synchronous teaching. And I firmly believe that our teachers are going to do well at it. They may have, they may have some stumbles along the way, but that's okay. That's how we learn. And I don't think it's a bad thing so nice to see the students, see the teachers or or me struggle with morning announcements some days, you know. So it is, it it's, it's a learning curve. And I think in the end, we're just going to be better for it.
Thanks for taking all my questions. I have no more questions.
No problem. Well, you know where to find me if you have one tomorrow.
Well, thanks, Chris and Rebecca. This is helpful. And I'll just say, you know, my, I asked a question before the meeting. To to my high schoolers at the middle high school and and they said. They said, Dad, make sure you you say that, you know, it should be two days. So, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So they were, they were big advocates for that, but I didn't have to advocate at all. So so thank you.
And I, and I know it, and I know, and I know the teachers are excited about, you know, I I've bumped in a couple of them and they're excited to really engage with with our students. And I I really do want to say thank you to Rebecca, Steve, Chris, really for doing this because I really. Maybe instead of me walking in and have my kid cooking a potato chip from chemistry class today, you know, he's going to be able to have some more in-person. I don't know what they're doing.
He could start fires at school.
I don't know what he was doing. I, I want to talk to.
We had, we had, we had the same thing going on here too. So.
Yeah, potato chip with the lighter. I, okay. Beyond my point is I'm excited to see this and more of an engagement. So I really want to extend a thank you for all the hard work to Matt Stone, to Steve, to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll bump them down if that's okay?
No, I was gonna say, thank you. Have a great evening, guys.
You too. Thank you.
So Steve, next up is the tournament participation. This was something that we were scheduled to talk about this evening.
Yes, as we just get back, the board committed to every step of the way, just updates. And and so now the the next stage, many of our teams are are finished. We're we're left with just a couple of the hockey and the basketball teams looking forward to interest classic tournament play. The, we have had a lots of communication and collaboration about, you know, other schools. But we are looking to get support from the board to move into tournament participation under the same guidelines. And that is lots of, again, lots of communication. If we have concerns with quarantines or exposures or positives or symptoms. Then we call and say we cancel and the same thing for the opposing school and teams in tournaments in the fall. Did cancel due to symptoms due to quarantine or to exposure. So we take that seriously and it would be. The first week back after break and then right before the vote. Basically, it's a week of the preliminary, you know, in a small grouping and then it goes further, but it would begin the week after vacation.
Don't forget Nordic, Steve.
And Nordic is, they're just about done, right, Rob?
They've got their state meet, which will be the week we get back in March.
Perfect, thank you.
They're working out some details of that.
Perfect.
How to, how to, how to remember board members feel about that? This is the opportunity for sort of a check-in to see if if we're comfortable with sort of the the tournaments. As opposed to regular season.
Steve, is there any big difference in the, so we've sort of been in the regional group. Are we going to be outside of the regional group or how's that going to work?
And then we can, now we go back into the class or the division. So we go like it would be. Like Hillsborough's in our division, but I think that's the only one. So now we hit same size schools as opposed to regional. But still the same guidelines and the same strong relationships. You know, Dan and I have been doing this and Chris has been doing this a while. So we have great communication. But it's a different group. They were in their regional bubble and now we expand to the size of school, you know, division three.
You know, I'm I'm still where I am in December and I respect, you know, what the board is is moving forward. And and I do have a heart and I do want to wish our students a successful competition. You know, I I'm where I am back, you know, December. You know, I, I'm where I am back, you know, December. I do want to say it's been great to hear of the no cases with it and that there's been good communication with the district. And I'm pleased to hear that. You can still be supportive in, in a sense of thanking what you guys put in place. But, you know, I, I still want to stay firm where I was back in December, but I want to respect the choices, you know? And wish them good luck and all that. Thanks, guys.
In our, Steve, so our students who are still participating in tournaments, they're, they're, when we go back on March 1st, they're still going to be remote throughout, throughout the tournament.
For the indoor, right, for the three indoor teams. That is correct. But at least it'll be synchronous learning and so they will stay current, right? So they will be in the same schedule. They just will have the synchronous option versus, right, I mean, so just to make sure.
When would those kids be rejoining us then in person? Are they then after their sports going to close also be required to complete a 10-day quarantine?
Andrea, that's a good question. I, I'll put that on my agenda to talk with Amy and the nurses on next Tuesday. I'm actually not during vacation because I don't meet during vacation, but I will for the Tuesday back. That's a great question. And to be completely honest, I did not talk with the nurses about that, but, but happily to do that and we'll report out.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on, on the tournaments? It sounds like people are comfortable, you know, proceeding under the same sort of guidelines that we've been operating under? Okay, not everybody, Norm. I appreciate that, but the consensus of the board anyway.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, we don't need to, it's, let's move on.
And then Andrea's question just brought to mind, just, it's not so much a question, but maybe it's, it's a statement, Steve. So for, for families who may be traveling over, over February vacation, you know, the, the policy of not only the district, but I think that, you know, what, what's being asked is that those, those students don't come to school on, on March 1st, but instead they, they quarantine for the 10 days as is required. So I'm assuming that has been communicated to families, sort of the, you know, the, the, the policy of what our expectations are.
Yep. And it's, it comes up with a screening, right? We, everybody takes a screening every day and, and the nurses follow up with a screening. But yes, the nurses have been in contact with families to calculate the, the quarantine due to travel outside of New England.
Perfect, thank you. And that would leave, anything on the decision-making matrix? Steve, you want to update us on this evening?
Yeah, the seven-day average in Merrimack County as of yesterday was 21.5, which actually moves us down from the tipping point to accelerated spread. So we went from red, or I don't know if we'd call it orange, but we went down a level. That's the first time in a while we've done that. So we'll keep reporting out cases weekly to the board, to the community. But it's, it's certainly a good sign that we've gone in the other direction now. So, so that's where we are on the decision-making matrix, 21.5 of the average in the last seven days in the county.
Keep muting myself, sorry. That's a good news going in the right direction. Any questions for Steve on that, on the decision-making matrix? All right, so we'll move, we've done the next agenda item, so we'll move to a update from Norm, I believe, on the budget committee, public hearing debrief and where, where the budget committee ended up.
Sure, thanks, Jim. And I want to say thank you to the board for attending the public hearing. It was great to have your support. You know, I want to extend a huge thank you to Steve and Michelle for all their help at every meeting for, you know, the last couple of months and to this board for your support in preparing me for the budget hearing. Yeah, I'm pleased to say, you know, we talk about a debrief, you take away the G E and it's brief. That's what our public hearing was. And, you know, we only had one question about our budget and I think it was more of a, of a comment. And to me, it, it's a sign that we, we answer all the questions from the community at that time. You know, there's going to be more questions this community is going to want to ask and we need to be prepared and that's great. But to be brief, I'm pleased to say it was a pleasure working with the budget committee and really engaging with them and some good questions. But they all agreed 100%, 100% unanimously on all our warrants. And I thank you all for your support and I'm very pleased to move this forward to the town.
Any questions for Norm? Norm, great job and Michelle and Steve too, for all, for all the work. But yeah, great job on the budget committee and answering their questions and getting, you know, getting the consensus of that group. That's, that's great. Good job. All right, so moving on to the agenda, update on the renewables and the five R committee. And Steve, I'm thinking, I can add to you.
Yeah, just briefly, just last meeting, we talked about an update where we were in our social justice work and our anti-discrimination policy. We just thought, give another update. So remember, so we're working with Cooper and Simon on the students for 100, the 100% renewables by 2030, that work. And also our, so that's considered our longer-term work and we're also working with our five Rs group. So we've really separated this into two groups. Five Rs group is working on our, reducing our waste. And so it's a couple of things we've done. Amy Roth sent an email out to the entire district to be really thoughtful and deliberate about how much paper you're using. She applied for and received a grant from Hopking Public Schools Foundation to have a composting program in our schools, which is really exciting. And we're hoping to expand that to our other schools, a kind of pilot at Maple. If you didn't catch it, Maple Street School was a school recycling of the year award this year. So we like that. So, and we've had Tracy Barker came in and we, we talked with Tracy about all, certainly the regulations now in COVID are a lot of single use, which is plastics, but we're looking forward to moving to actually traditional silverware in a different approach that we're using. Contour Creamery and they call it, believe it or not, milk from a cow where you actually use glasses and you serve yourself milk. So that's the future. Trying to reduce white paper and our single use there, increase composting and reducing our paper use. For the, for the, moving to 100% renewables, we're taking a look at commitment statements that some districts, Hanover School District has done in, in Dairy Field School. We're looking at their, their work and in making statements about the importance of sustainability. And Cooper's working hard to bring a representative from a school district in Minnesota to one of our meetings who actually achieved 100% renewables and we're trying to learn from their journey. And we've actually, at our last meeting, we started talking with the transition to Mr. Flynn about joining this group and just catching up and reviewing any statements that come to the board. So the work is ongoing. Bonnie Christie's been a great help. Amy Roth, Sarah Rudy, Ted Wells. It's been great. Learned a lot, learned a lot about the impact on really the social justice aspect of the plastic industry too. So it's been a great journey for me and in next, in next meeting or so, we might have just a statement of just sustainability, how important it is to the district have some information on the website. But, you know, I really enjoyed learning from Bonnie and Cooper and Amy and everybody. It's been a good experience.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, I want to thank you for continuing this work and, and, you know, it's one of those, those, I guess, other, other, other jobs that the superintendent does, but it's, it's, it's really important. It's, it's really great work. And I think, you know, it's, it's just another item on your agenda that you do very well. That sort of takes your time. But not every superintendent, you know, attends and really helps shepherd through these types of committees. Anyway, I just, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for doing that.
Oh, thank you. I, to me, it's all about, as you know, it's learning. I get to learn every meeting from really great people. So thank you. I appreciate, I've enjoyed it.
A quick question on the students for 100. Is there any thought of like a, a timetable in terms of when, you know, what, what's the forecast in terms of that?
Sure. And we put together some next steps, like Michelle, for example, just this week led a energy audit of the high school for heating. So Michelle and I are going to put together all the energy audits we've done in the district. And then the first step on this journey to, for 100% renewables is really taking a look at the energy audits and finding the holes and filling them. So that work is being done. What we wanted to do is make sure we knew what the day after was. The board committed to 100% renewables. That's what we're working on the day after the commitment. But our hope is to have a sustainability statement, really, hopefully at the next meeting. And then have our plan to the board about what happens if the board does commit to 100% renewables and the next steps involved. So it really has meaning and steps that we can accomplish. But Rob, the big beginning effort is assimilation of all the energy audits we've done and then finding if there's areas that we need to plug holes.
Thanks.
And I just, I think one thing for me, you know, about that committee is just, I think it's great that our students who have graduated are still, are still part of the process. And, you know, I had said to them individually, I'd said, you know what, when you graduate and you leave Hopkinson, follow through with a goal that you want to see accomplished. And I, I want to say thank you to all of them. They're still engaged, just, they're still participating. And to me, that's giving back to the community and, and just to have that oversight into dedication to something you started is just a great thing. So thank you to those students. It's really great to see that.
All right, so moving on to the next item, which is the school board's schedule.
I just really thank you. I, I will continue to flesh this document out. And now it really takes us through June 18th, right, well, tend to probably, right, that would be Friday night graduation. Thursday is June 17th and on our regular schedule, that would be the last board meeting of 2021. And that would be, right, if our fund balance and article 10 and year-end expenditures. So just look ahead to there, but Martin, and we also, I tried to put in all, all the nominations and, and we tried to make sure my last run, I actually get all the dates right this time. But I really want to bring some attention to where we are in March 4th. We'd like to have a public hearing on the maintenance trust to work on some expenditures there that planned and we can talk about that. Then a board meeting, Chris has filed the NEAS five-year report. Lots of really good stuff that's been done, including the facility project. So it's a good update there. We'd like to bring that forward. I did work with Charlene Betts to bring a 15-minute virtual robotics, just so we can learn what that experience is. So students did reach, reach out to Chris and just want to start getting, taking the board's temperature about what, if the board would be behind some planning on the prom. So you can think about that as you're driving around in the next week. And that's would be our decision about spring sports, believe it or not. It's, it's, you know, we, we go right into that. And then a really important piece that night, so we can put in is to us, the board would adopt the first round of additional, or actually the, the next round, sorry, of additional alternates. The, the building committee's meeting, that executive meeting's next Tuesday. The building committee is meeting March 2nd and will bring forward recommendations about what additional projects can be tackled. And really all that, that's an important meeting part of March 4th. So we can, like, for example, if we decide to do more flooring, we got to order it, make sure it's ready for September 1. Actually, it's a little late, like August 28th transfer of Harold Martin. We'd like it before school starts. But I hope you can dig in on the schedule. If there's anything you want to see, we've added a young inventor's presentation in April and a whole bunch of stuff. But I'll try and keep this updated. But really, for me, it's making sure you have the dates and I accomplish what you'd like to have accomplished in, you know, as, as I, my, my tenureship of stewarding these meetings is now, it's, it's in sight. It's June 17th, so. But I, you've got me on contract to June 30th. So if you need another date in the twenties, I'm in. Now won't get rid of me that easy. So we have to do another one for expenditures in the twenties. I'm in, no worries.
One more for old time's sake, Steve?
Actually, Michelle, remember, we've done meetings on June 30 before. I'm not recommending that. So you don't really need to see me on June 30. I know Mr. Goopel does not want to see me on June 30. But does that scare you for help as you, as you're planning and flushing it out and I'll continue to, I'm going to actually probably drone this into you just so we, everybody's on the same page. I just want to make sure we get where we want to get to.
Yeah, I think this is really helpful. And so I would, you know, any board member that has changes they want to see or any additional items, you know, send them, you know, to myself, send them directly to Steve. But I think loading this up is, is great. So thank you for putting it together.
No, I appreciate it. And as Jim said, please, if you want something the last couple of months or, you know, starting in July, I'm happy to work on the next iteration too for you. Cool beans?
That's great. And so next up is the early retirement update.
Just to give you a, a quick heads up, March 1st is the notification date required by the CBA. Up to this point, we've had three notifications, two acceptances and one not acceptance. And, and then we have two in waiting. Based on my early discussions, my expectation is we probably will just have two acceptance this year. And so as Jim and I spoke briefly, we have in the past, in a situation like this where we have some funds, we could reopen. The board has the prerogative. All it does is give choice. I usually would like, if the board was interested, I, you know, Scott's on the call. I usually call Scott tomorrow and say the board would like to do this. The H E A has never objected because all it is, is an extra benefit. There's no, you're right, there's no compulsion. We don't make anybody take it. It's just an offer. If the board would like to do that, it's up to the board.
And my recommendation, you know, for what it's worth would be to open it up. I mean, there's no, there's no harm and, and we've talked a lot about this. And so it feels like if there's, if there are, if there are staff who are on the verge or thinking about it, opening it up enables them to continue that conversation, I thought. So that would be my recommendation.
I'll second it. I think it's a great idea.
I'll just wait after March 1st just to make sure that I don't want to open it up and then have two more people accept. But once that March 1st, like March 2nd, Michelle and I usually talk and say, yep, we'll pull the trigger.
And then what's the timetable when, when it gets opened up again? What, I, I assume and it's not four months again between?
We typically, 30 days is what we've done in the past. So if I send out the email March 2nd, then it would be like May 2nd. You know, typically we've given 30 days in the past.
May 2nd or April 2nd?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't know why I went there. Yes, it would be typically 30 days.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, perfect. So there seemed to be consensus that come March 1st, Steve can open it back up if we don't have all our spots filled.
Is that okay with everyone? Everybody okay?
Yeah. And are we going to open it up for just, if, say we get two, will we open it? I guess, no matter how many we get, will we open it back up to the full five?
Yeah, and so it'll be up to the board and what, what's good about that, Michelle can give us an update where we are in fund balance and things like that at that point. Again, it doesn't obligate. It just, and once, if we get a couple of people in, I'll bring it back to the board. We'll follow, we typically follow the same process as in the contract. It's just a date extension. Is that okay?
No, that sounds perfect. All right, so our next item is financials. And Michelle?
Sure. In the packet was the January financial. We're getting closer and closer to knowing really what the ending results will be. So again, for people, as it gets another month in, we know a little bit more. And so the estimates that I use, I kind of let, let lessen the rain, if you want to call it, on things. Because the potential of something happening like I might have first predicted is not going to, you know, not going to happen that way. So we're definitely more at this point than what we have committed in the budget process, which is great. So the hope would be that that continues to move in that direction and that maybe there could be a similar meeting than what was had last year of doing different things to kind of look ahead to financially stabilizing the district in many different ways. All right, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Just a couple of, just the, the action item right on the, on Rob's article about going to 5% is really important for stabilizing the district, providing more funds to stabilize the tax rate. And if you caught it, Jim and Andrea, Michelle and I will be having a CIP meeting because I think very quickly, we're going to have, bring it whole thing to the board. And that's going to be stabilized in the district. Those two pieces, as Michelle just alluded to, are critical to the financial operations long-term in the district.
Michelle, did you get, did I miss it? The notification of what we'd began for COVID funds additional from the state? Have we gotten that a dollar amount yet?
Well, so we got a, a potential. We've not gotten any other information other than an official number. But then I heard even from BAs today, from other parts of the state, that there's been talks about that number might change because of the free and reduced count. And so all we know is it's, it's roughly between 150 and 170, but that, again, you know, we'll know more as time goes on. At some point, we are going to have to have a public hearing once we actually know more than what we know today. The, the other thing is, is that we are looking at, but at right now, we can't do anything with it because we did already look. But at some point, we will be able to tap into FEMA, which we've never been able to before. We tried to before, before we got the S A money. And then they said, schools can't do it. And then President Biden actually put in something and now they're trying to work through all of that logistics. So that might be another mechanism that we might be able to look at too. There's different stringents on that, meaning it's more of P P E and building. But it's just potentially another avenue that we might have available to us.
So Michelle was close to an ish there. I just want you to know, she almost had an ish. See, that's how much I've rubbed off. See, that's how much I've rubbed off on.
I was trying to get something and lunches are still free, right? We still have that program going on?
Yeah.
So everyone listening. Yeah, get lunch. I've been using it. So.
And breakfast.
Students, Norm, students.
Yes, dude, I know.
Any other questions for Michelle on the finance? Thank you, Michelle. And then we have another donation.
Yeah, a donation to First Robotics from GWY Corporation over in Dover. We appreciate their support. It's an action item tonight.
Perfect. So. This brings us to the second public comment period on our agenda. And so. Appreciate everyone. If you want to provide comments, again, if you go down towards the bottom of your screen and you click the raise your hand button, that will raise your hand and let us know that you have. A comment that you'd like to make to the board. And again, I would ask. Try to keep your comments to three minutes and just give us your name and your address would be great. So firsthand is Darlene Gildersleeve.
Oh, hi there. Again, I just have some remarks based on listening to the meeting tonight. Firstly, I think it's really inappropriate for any board member to limit. A resident's First Amendment right to free speech. And to give their opinion on the comment, I think that's very politically motivated. And I don't agree with that at all. Our resident has a federally protected right to free speech, and this is actually. Has gone to court before. So I just want. The board to be very mindful of that, that a resident can basically say whatever they want. Without a board member trying to censor that speech. So I just want you to keep that in mind. And I have researched that fully. The second point I want to get to is my son had the privilege. Before he was recommended to transfer to a charter school. And it was Hopkinton High that actually recommended that he transfer to a charter school. He had the privilege of being taught by Mr. Zipki, who is a wonderful, wonderful teacher and a wonderful man. I never once insulted a teacher in Hopkinton. In fact, my children had some really, really, really great teachers. And I want to give a special shout out to Ms. Tricia Walton, who is a phenomenal educator. And who comes in person and does the best that she can. So I never once ever, ever insulted. Or said anything derogatory about a teacher. What I said was the union has more say here than our minor children. That's exactly what I said. All of my comments were directed towards the teacher's union and never once an educator. So I want to make that very clear. Because I even got a message from another parent in Hopkinton, asking me to apologize for my remarks. That's ridiculous. That's absolutely ridiculous. I have seen in person in Concord School District. What the union is capable of by protecting a child predator. Okay, and discrediting children that reported the predator while he was kissing and making out with minor kids. The union reps are the ones who tried to protect the predator. I want you to really reflect on that, rather than using your political affiliations to defend unions. When I have seen firsthand, working for a whole year, fighting against people that protected a child predator who raped a student. So please keep that in mind. I never once said anything bad about a teacher and I never, ever, ever would unless they did wrong by a child. That's my character. Okay. The other thing is the board is the boss. So Jim, I saw that you deflected to Steve on a few occasions. The board is the boss. The board is the employer of the superintendent. And I never want you, any of you to forget that, even when the new superintendent takes the position. The board is the boss. Any decisions made are your responsibility. If we don't go back to in-person learning in Hopkinton, it's on you. It's not on Steve. Steve's just an administrator doing the books. You all are the ones that are making the personal decisions that affect our children every single day. So if they're suffering and if they're in the hospital because their remote learning is totally failing them, it's actually on the board. It's not on Mr. Chamberlain at all. So I just.
I'm just going to ask you, the three minutes is running over. So if you just.
Okay. And I also want that policy mailed to me about three minutes because I never called the board. I don't usually even bother, but so many parents are communicating to me that their children are being in in severe mental health crises. So. You know, if if you can waive that ridiculous three minute policy and then and then I want you to actually show me where it says that there's a three minute limit in writing. In part of your school board policy. Because just because you don't like what a resident has to say, doesn't mean that you limit their free speech.
Thank you, Darlene.
I have, I actually have four more points that I have to make. And Norm, I really appreciate.
Darlene, I'm just asking you to be respectful of everybody's time. We asked for three minutes.
I'm being totally respectful and hardly anyone else is calling. But I want to thank Norm for bringing up the fact that sports are being prioritized in Hopkinton. And why isn't education being.
Darlene, I don't want to cut you off, but I'm going to ask you to finish up. I'll give you another minute and then.
I have three more points.
Darling, I understand. Darling, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just going to, we're going to give you one more minute.
In writing, I want the school board policy in writing saying that I'm limited to four minutes. Because I can't find anywhere online. So if you could just provide me with that policy, that'd be great. And also I want to bring up the fact that facilitated remote. When you're talking about a special education students, these are the kids that are most vulnerable and most in need. And if they're not in person five days a week, you need to provide the residents exactly why is their kid with autism? With learning disabilities, with cerebral palsy, why are they in school so little when they're the ones who need it most? These special education students deserve five days of in-person learning per week. That this facilitated remote for our most vulnerable disabled students is absolutely failing and ridiculous. And I it's a total, a total misery for the parents and for the students. And I know this firsthand from my own personal experience. One of the callers.
Thank you, Darlene.
I'm almost done. Two more points. Again, I have a disability myself.
And thank you, Darlene. So I'd like to call on the next hand, Sarah Mattson Dustin.
I'm sorry. You hear my phone ringing. I am proud to be the parent who said that the previous caller should apologize. And so since she didn't, I will say it myself. To every educator in this district, I am so sorry that you had to hear it. I don't think that I can put it any more plainly than that. With my remaining couple of minutes, I would like to make two points. The first is that it's really important to read the new CDC guidelines closely. It is not mandatory six feet in all instances. When communities are at low or moderate levels of transmission as distinguished from substantial or high, it is six feet to the greatest extent possible. And that's not like an accidental turn of phrase. It's a, it's different rows or different columns in the chart. So. I think that that's something that we have to keep in mind. As we look for a path towards more in-person learning. And then finally, it really pains me when I hear. Discussion of how remote and hybrid is working for high schoolers and not discussion of how it's working for the littlest kids. If your kid doesn't know how to read, doesn't know how to tell time, doesn't know how to form letters and numbers, that's really, really different. And I've said before, and I'll say again, I would trade every day of in-person for my third grader if it could get my kindergartner in the door. So now I really hope that we will keep in mind that everything that's happening. Has a differential impact depending on the age of the learner. So would just ask you to continue to keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Next hand is Dennis Mullner. Who has lost somewhere?
Sorry.
Nope. There he is. All right. Dennis, we lost you for a moment.
Couldn't get off mute. Really appreciate that that Mr. Zipki called. I've had the privilege of having a number of my kids have him in class. And I think he made a really great point. That I think to reiterate from the other caller, I've honestly never seen our teachers working harder. I have children in both Maple Street and the middle high school. And I really see the extra effort going in. And it's not unnoticed by me or anybody else in the community. And I think that. I think the teachers can't hear that enough. So thank you to all the teachers. I also happen to know some of the union reps and I can assure everybody that they're they're not mafioso. So. And I think they're good people trying to do what's right. And all of that said, I think that the the science on in-school spread is is probably worth having a look at. And nobody's asking for everybody to go back to in-person and nobody to be able to be remote or anybody be put in an unsafe situation. So I think that a lot of times we can, we can say things in generalities that aren't, that aren't necessarily what. You know, what, what may be what we mean or or what everybody needs. But I really appreciate that that the board members are also parents. And I think it's great that some board members and their children are having really good experiences. And I think it's great that those board members bring that to to their position and to the community when. People come forward and and ask for things to be changed or improved or whatever. But also I'd like to say that. I think that that empathy goes both ways. And for those of you who haven't had a family that's lived through mental illness. I think it's fantastic if you have. Children or neighbors or friends or yourselves that are are good high learners. And have the opportunity to. To have a support system at home, but not everybody in town does. And having lived through a family member that struggled with depression and ultimately committed suicide, I can tell you exactly what reaching out for help looks like. It looks like all the parents that are calling you with a shake in their voice and telling you that they're really having trouble. Their kids are having trouble. We're not asking for anybody to go back in person who doesn't want to go back in person. We're asking for the opportunity for our children to be able to go back as much in person as possible. And I really think if the state mandates two days at a minimum, I think we can do better. That one of the things that Governor Suninenu said is that there are only about 12 school districts left in the state that aren't back at least two days in person. Every week. We're one of those 12. Do we really want to be in the bottom 12? So despite all the efforts from our teachers, I think our teachers are, and I hope everybody agrees with me, the absolute best in-person teachers in the state. But I have to tell you. We're not necessarily the best teachers in the state compared to schools that are going, that have been in full in-person all the way through. Town's right next door, Kearsarge School District. Up in North Conway, there are lots of public and private school districts that are going five days a week. They don't have any bigger facilities than we do. Are they using six feet distancing? Rob, no, they're not. There is leeway to go with less than six feet if you do, if you're masking well. And I think we should look at it. We're asking you to look at it. When enough parents ask you to look at it. You can either not hear us and tell us that we're being crazy or fringe. Or you can hear us and do something about it. And as parents and taxpayers, we have only one way to have our voices heard. If you won't hear it over the phone and on these Zoom calls. And that's to vote. And if you don't believe that there are a lot of people that want to go back, enough people that want to go back, that it's going to be really hard to pass a budget that's 8% higher than last year. You can go ahead and put the budget up for vote. Or you can try to help get the kids back in school. I know we can do it. There's a way to do it. I really appreciate your help. I know I'm at my three minutes, Jim. Thank you, everybody, for all that you do.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate your comments. Next hand is Candy Garvin.
Well, my friends, thank you again for being there. Mia and Juliette. I don't think you get enough credit for being students who come in and tell it how it is as a student. I thank you for your part. I bet you do get it, but I'm going to tell you as a member of the community from 515 Boundary Road. I really admire you being on this board. So thank you for everything you do. And even when you say just a little bit of stuff, it means a lot. Remember that your voice has to be heard. That being said, I don't care if it's one minute, three minutes, a half an hour. When you have enough hands raised. You usually get limited, not because it's a political thing, but because the person who can see how many people are in line are trying to balance everybody's comment. There are always going to be people who are upset. There are always going to be people who just talk through. Everybody else talking. I admire you all. I would have to wear a mask and sunglasses if I was in front of people on a virtual meeting. I really admire that. Thank you for what you're saying. I have been here for a while. I think it's a shame that we always think that Hopkinton has to be the best. Now, now wait a minute. Don't crawl up my back. I think we have a fine. Educational system. I think we have excellent teachers. We have informed and involved parents, some a little too, but that's okay too. I have been there. But being the best, being the first, being different than everybody else, isn't necessarily a bad thing. You board people. Are great. You listen to us. When you defer to Steve and Michelle, it's not asking them to make a decision. It's asking them for information so the board can make a decision. Duh. Anyway, the fat lady is going to sing. Good night.
Thank you, Candy. Appreciate your comments. Next hand is Catherine Matteo.
Hi, Catherine Matteo, 108 Park Ave. I don't think I can top Candy though.
Oh, we want a song, Catherine.
No. I just wanted to just very quickly circle back on the SB2 stuff just real quick. I know that. Some of the comments mentioned, mentioned getting rid of town meeting or not having a deliberative in-person. Where you work out amendments. That's actually not how it works. It just splits up the town meeting where you have that in-person deliberative. Into two parts where you still have the in-person, where you have the deliberative session, you can work out amendments, you you have questions in-person. Together in a room. And then. The second session is you vote on what was hashed out. So I think that's just really important to mention because I hear an awful lot about. How you lose that with SB2. And that's not necessarily the case. It just takes. Sitting in the gym all day and voting over and over again, over a course of five or six hours. You have the deliberative and then you go home, you think about it, you go back a week later and you get to vote. And some people like that idea and some people don't. But I just wanted to. Maybe clarify that. And that's it. You guys have had a long night and thanks for your time and I'm not going to sing. So take care.
Thanks for the comments and the clarification. I appreciate it. This will be a challenge. Who's going to sing first? So next hand is Elizabeth Sides.
I am not singing either. No. 265 Crowell Road. I have to be honest that. I I'm kind of like my mind is a little baffled, like I'm, I'm, I can't believe this, the public comments tonight. I I'm saddened by them. You know, my 10 year old was here for that first one. And that's horrifying. I mean, I, I really don't want to cry here, but you know, that is so uncalled for and inappropriate and wrong. And I thank everyone. I thank Sarah. Mattson Dustin, who was that courageous person who said, you know, please apologize and all of you that have that have spoken up. I can't believe we're here. And then another caller calling in threatening to not vote the budget or the teacher's contract. That's just wrong. I, I, I'm really ashamed that that's what this town is talking about now during public. I, I, I'm really ashamed that that's what this town is talking about now during public meetings. So with that being said, that's not what I actually wanted to call up about at all. I, I just wanted to call in and say, first of all, you know, there are a lot of people who are really happy. Parents are satisfied. We may not be the loudest. We may not email you. We may not call in a lot. I think I'm one of the only ones that does. I have three remote kids here. I am so lucky. They are so lucky. All of the remote teachers are incredible. And if you're not in full remote, you actually don't know how great they are. And I'm going to tell everyone, they're wonderful. And they deserve a lot of credit. And the other thing is just really quickly, you know, of course, I'm a mom and a parent and I'm thinking about next year. And I think that, I hope that the staff can be ready to welcome back those full remote kids. Because I, I think my second grader will be third grader. I think she's going to have some problems. That will be a year and a half without being around kids a lot. And she feels secure in her little remote class. I think my then-fifth grader will be fine, I hope. And my kindergartner will be great. She doesn't, won't know anything else. But I want that to just be something that people think about. Teachers think about, but they can't do everything. They're going to have a million things to do. So I hope we get the resources. I hope they get some guidance, some training. I would be a parent that would come in and like just hug kids. I know that's probably not allowed, but you know, I think my little then-third grader is going to need some hugs. She's going to want to go home. And so I, I, I hope they surprise us and they probably will. And I bet it will be a lot better than this, you know, mom who's thinking about what she knows is thinking. That's it. I appreciate all of you. Thanks for everyone that, that's calling in to say the right things and to stand up and say what's right. So thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Thank you for your comments. So let's see, Jen.
Hi, this is Jennifer Blaggriff, 716 Hopkinton Road. So first of all, I did not hear the beginning public comments. I did not turn on till 6:05. But from what I've seen on Facebook and hearing what people have said, I think that there is people that had a hard time inhibiting what they were saying and what they felt. So that's pretty difficult. That's a really difficult situation for everyone to be in. So I'm sorry that that had to occur for everyone. So I definitely agree that we shouldn't be pointing fingers or placing blame. And we all need to be respectful of each other. So before, I also missed a fair amount of the school board meeting trying to take care of the kids. So I guess I just have a question first before I make my public comment. Has the board met with the school union to discuss the possibility of changing the MOA this year?
We have not met with the union at this point.
Okay. So I, so I guess what I just want to say is I do believe that the board should at least meet with them to discuss changes to the two MOAs. I think it's worth doing some collaborative problem solving now that high-risk teachers and older staff members can get vaccinated or will soon be able to get vaccinated. I think things have changed a lot since the fall when we didn't know as much. And it seems worthwhile for the school board to at least start some type of conversation. Because this isn't going to, I mean, this is going to impact the rest of this school year, but with the different variants coming out and different things, we're going to have issues like this next year. So I think those conversations just need to start. And some things that I've thought of that are worth, I think possibly worth you guys talking about is the fact that, you know, teachers over 65 can be vaccinated right now. I know that people with medical conditions or that are caregivers for people with certain medical conditions are either, I don't know if they're starting to get vaccinated or they're close in line to being vaccinated. So that, you know, changes things. I don't know if there's any possibility of doing Plexiglas around desks, you know, getting desks three feet apart and doing Plexiglas around them. I don't know if that's something worth considering, but I think it's at least, you know, maybe worth talking about. And then also, you know, just looking at, you know, different protective gear for teachers. You know, looking at those KN95s possibly and face shields for teachers. And maybe coming, you know, if we are able to come back three feet apart. And then I, I did hear the student reps on the school board speak. I did hear that part. So, you know, the cafeteria, that sounds like a huge concern and a very worthy concern. So I wonder about, you know, in the spring, students eating outside or students eating in their class with maybe Plexiglas shields. So anyway, those are just some thoughts that I've had. Just that this, you know, discussion should be starting with the, with the school unions and should be starting soon. I did bring my son to his two-year checkup today and the pediatrician, you know, brought up on his own, you know, what, what's going on with, you know, children's vaccines, that those are being studied and it's probably going to be phased in, you know, older kids, then younger kids will get it. But it sounds like it's going to be the, you know, the higher risk kids, just like it is with the adults right now. The higher risk kids are going to be getting them first. So we're not going to have in the fall, from, you know, my understanding of my conversation with him, we're not going to have the majority of kids vaccinated in the fall. Like I don't, so these, I just think these, I keep saying it, but I just think these conversations need to start like sooner rather than later. And yeah, I hope everyone can work to just be kind and respectful when they call in. I do, I do, I have had disagreements, you know, or are not agreed with things, the school board and admins and teachers. I haven't agreed with everything, but I always have respected everyone. I hope I try to respect everyone. I do respect everyone. So I just wanted to say that too, that I don't always agree with everything, but I definitely respect everyone in this district. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate your comments. And we don't have any other hands up except for now. Amanda Gilman.
Hey, y'all. Thank you again for taking my time or taking time for me. First, let me say that I am so grateful for all of the transitions and the thinking, the planning done by all the teachers and administrators. And please don't for a moment think that I am not grateful for the flexibility and the effort that has been exhibited to get us where we are. Because where we are is definitely better than where we were, 100% hands down. So don't for a minute anyone think that I'm being ungrateful. But we can do better. And you as board members and administrators, you can do better and you can continue to do better as you have done and exhibited and proven since September. You have adjusted and adapted and you can continue to do so and not be satisfied with the status quo. Two days in-person is the new state minimum by the governor, which is what we're doing now. I pose the question, since when has Hopkinton been satisfied with the state minimum in our schools? Just let that sink in for a minute, everyone, please. Because Hopkinton has never been satisfied with the state minimum. Hopkinton is providing the state minimum to its students right now. We can do better. And while I appreciate the current situation, maybe working for some of the board members and their families and for the student reps, I'm grateful for that and I'm very happy for you. It's working for some parents with the means to stay home or perhaps hire private tutors and off-duty teachers to help support their students. But I'm telling you that this current hybrid is not working for all. The littles are behind second grade, despite the best efforts of our hard-working and caring teacher. My student needs more in-person time. And I'm worried about fifth grade. Do y'all understand how fifth grade progresses to sixth grade? Begins this accelerated track to calculus in high school. I'm sure Mr. Zipkey could comment on this more, but I'm not certain that's going to happen now for the current fifth graders. They're so far behind in math. Will they be able to differentiate to the sixth grade pre-calculus model for high school? It's not just about special ed. It's about all the kids. So I'm grateful for synchronous learning in the high school. I really am. It's beautiful and I know I pushed for it. Keep it up. If it's working, do it. But we don't have that for the littles and it's not working. So lastly, I need to voice a little bit of frustration here that I feel like important decisions are made by the board. Important decisions about returning to person 100% next year, perhaps. Maybe even tonight, it's going to happen behind closed doors. And yet, where parents have no ability to voice their concerns. And yet discussions like high school sports occupied my time in listening to three meetings. It occupied your time of three meetings. So I'm kind of wondering where our priorities are at when the important decisions about the entire school's future happened behind closed doors. And I realize that you're bound by the MOA and we always revert back to this language and this deflectionary language. But it's becoming very frustrating when kids are falling behind. And your job as school board members is to be the go-between, to stand up for the kids. So my question, last question is how do parents voice their concerns about next year options and all-in? What do you suggest we do to let the board and administration know that we're concerned about the lack of instructional time and in-person learning?
Thank you, Amanda. A suggestion is to raise it during public comment at board meetings and to send correspondence to the board that we do read. And I know most of us respond to accordingly. So I appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
So the next hand that's up is Amber Spofford.
Hi, thank you so much for your time. Amber Spofford, 161 Fieldstone Road. I have a fifth grader, a second grader and kindergartner. And I think my second grader and my fifth grader are fine. They're thriving. They're learning. My kindergartner is struggling every single day. I've voiced this many times on emails to all of you guys. And I'm going to echo what I said in the fall. And that is, we need to listen and we need to be guided by science and not emotions and fear. The CDC is giving us guidelines for returning to school. We know that transmission rates are low in schools. We really need to revisit the littles. I so appreciate the student reps and the high schoolers that are struggling with mental health issues and are voicing their concerns. My kindergartner cannot go to his teacher and express his frustrations. He does it to me at home daily with tears and tantrums, and it is awful. And when he goes to school, he is the happiest kid and he's learning so much. We need to find creative ways to get the kids back at school. If we're going to maintain and abide by the MOA and we're going to maintain six feet in masks, then we need to find other ways to teach the kids. And I wrote this to you guys in an email. Can we try to do gym outside, art outside, open up other classrooms or hallways? We talked a lot about buses in the fall and a lot of parents gave up the bus option and drove their kids to school so that we can bring those kids back. Could we bring out a survey to the teachers and the parents and say, how many of you guys want to come back in-person full-time? I am so happy that the remote parents are happy and I'm happy that the hybrid parents are happy. But the, the kids that are suffering need to be heard too, just like you said. I would love to see a survey come out so that we can iron out those numbers and see, can we get the kids back in, especially kindergarten and first grade, who are very, very different learners than the middle school and high school kids? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Amber. Appreciate the comments. Next hand is Lisa Wangsnus.
Hi, this is Lisa Wangsnus. I'm at 470 Gold Hill Road. I want to first of all just say a sincere thanks for all your service and for your commitment through all of this to civil dialogue. It's really heartening. And I also want to give a huge thank you to our teachers who are just positively heroic. And I just wanted to say that I think you can be supportive of the teachers and also supportive of returning to full-time in-person education at some point this year, especially for younger students and particularly after most teachers are vaccinated. And I'll just, I won't go into, I won't, I won't repeat some of the comments, just Amber's comments. But I agree with them that this is hardest for the youngest kids. I have a first grader and a third grader. And, you know, we're great, I'm really grateful they're back in hybrid now. But on the days that they're home, you know, they have worksheets to do and many long hours with two working parents. And it's hard for us to cut back on our hours. There's not interaction with teachers, no interaction with other children. They can't call their friends. They can't meet up with them. And the science demonstrates that children who are younger present a much lower risk of transmitting COVID than children who are older. I wanted to, I'm glad to see that the board is going to talk about revisiting the MOA. I'd really like to know what the plan is for the remainder of the school year and for next year. And vaccines are coming in a matter of weeks. And I think we have to really think seriously about how we're going to handle the remainder of the school year and try to really take advantage of the time that we have. I wonder if the board will consider investigating the possibilities of going to school throughout the month of June. If teachers, most teachers are fully vaccinated by mid-May, we could still have six weeks of full-time school. And, you know, maybe it's easy to dismiss the end of the year. I've heard people say it's hot or it's, people's attention isn't focused enough. But, you know, my third grader will have been in school for five days during the entire month of February. And I think that that amount of time is significant. So that's all. I again, wanted to thank you very much for all of your service and your really wonderful commitment to this community. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the comments. So I believe, I believe that's all the hands that we have raised. And so at this point, I am going to close public comment. I do want to thank everybody for providing comments. And I do just, I want to thank everybody for, for, you know, adhering to time. I feel bad. This is, I think, the first time since I've been chair that we've had to, we've had to cut off comments. I feel like I gave pretty good instructions and facilitated. And so I do feel bad that we did have to mute and cut someone off. But I, I think for legitimate and good reasons. So thank you all. At this point, we have action items. Before I move to them, I'll just ask if any board members, anything else they want to add to the meeting before we do action items? All right, not seeing any. And I will say that the end of action items, I'll ask for a non-public under A, so just be prepared. All right, so we'll move into action items. We've done number 13 already. And so I would ask if there's a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the March 2022, no, 20, I'm sorry, yeah. The, accept the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the March 2021 Hopkinton School District Annual Meeting Calendar as presented.
It's FY22, but March of 21, so thank you.
So moved.
Any comments or any, any discussion? Seeing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So that motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt, to accept, I'm sorry, a $500 donation from GWY Incorporated in support of the Hopkinton High School First Robotics Team?
So moved and thank you.
Second, and thank you.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Other than thank you, Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Fram, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so I would ask if there is a motion for the- And so I would ask if there is a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to go into non-public session for the discussion of matters per RSA 91A, colon, three, small, Roman 2A for personnel?
So moved.
All right, motions have been made and seconded. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Goupel, yes.
And Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And as I think we, I mentioned, or we alluded to that the board will likely go into and have a non-meeting and non-meetings by statute are allowable for boards for negotiation purposes. And so that's not something we have to announce, but I think for transparency sake, we have been announcing if we were going to go into non-meetings. And so we have. So with that, I, for the board, I have emailed, you should have in your inbox, a link for the non-public portion of the meeting. And I would just ask if anybody needs a short couple-minute break to, to go for it. And then otherwise we'll go into, to non-public. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. So thank you all very much and thank the public for sticking us out and.